Okay, this is Rio, so we are back?
Yes, this is Ernie.
Okay, I'll do, let me do a quick roll call, Ernie?
Yes?
Sorry, let me start with my board book. Okay, so Letty, here, President Sue, here, Chris?
Here.
This is unofficial call, Maynard? Hey, Ernie?
Here.
Sophia?
Present.
Okay, so we're waiting on Maynard?
Danielle do the official roll call, right?
Yes. Maynard might be here, but he may have to press.
It takes him a while to go from closed session to open session, okay?
Shall we, th- this is Danielle, we're in open session, shall I go ahead and do roll call?
Well, do I need a motion to go back into open session first? I notice you have said motion.
Second Sophia.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Are we waiting for Maynard though? Should we wait for Maynard?
Well, we have quorum, let's hope he'll join soon.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
So move.
Second Sophia.
Say, roll call Danielle?
Mr. Apodaca?
Here.
Mr. La? Mrs. Mendoza?
Present.
Mr. Nishi?
Here.
Dr. Rios?
Here.
Mrs. Say?
Present.
Mrs. Yu?
Here.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, we welcome public comments, comments must be submitted by the present, will be, sorry, comments submitted will be presented during the public comment section which is limited to one hour and each speaker to one presentation of five minutes unless the board wishes to waive the time limit. Those who have a group concern are encouraged to select a spokesperson to address the board. Comments submitted regarding a specific agenda item will be presented following the staff comments and prior to the board's discussion and taking action. Tonight in closed session, the board discussed conference with labor negotiator, update on negotiations with ABCFT, ASME, and CSCEA. Conference with real property negotiator, Norah Glamorada Unified School District. The board discussed anticipated litigation, special education, OAH 2019 120715. Also in closed session, the board discussed and approved by a vote of seven to zero, two, one, initiate litigation against Juul, J-U-U-L, and similar defendants regarding damages and abatement related to vaping. And two, retain Baron and Bud as his co-counsel to file a lawsuit and represent the district. This time, I would like to call on Sophia Say to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Would you please all stand up, if you have flag near your house, facing the flag. Uh, they're speaking, I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
And nations.
Under God.
Under God.
Divisible.
Invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, board member Say. Uh, we will now move on to recognitions, uh, oh no, excuse me. Student, well, is it recognition or student board representative, Dr. Sue?
Thank you very much, President Rios. Um, so every year, we honor and recognize all of our student board representatives. You know, many of them, nine of them are seniors this year. And so I just want to recognize all of them tonight. Vanessa Acosta, senior at Artesia High School. Taylor Kim is an eleventh grader at Cerritos High School. Charlie Jones is a twelfth grader at Tracy High School. Alyssa Valencia is a twelfth grader at Whitney High School. Alondra Esparza, again, a twelfth grader at Artesia High School. Ayman Ahmed, who is a twelfth grader at Gar High School. Karen Perez, a twelfth grader at Tracy High School. And Melina Van, adult school representative. We also have Jayden Kim, who is also a twelfth grader at Cerritos High School. Alyssa Pelisak, twelfth grader at Gar High School. Joshua Garcia, twelfth grader at Whitney High School. And again, Andre Fontanat, who is an adult school representative. Um, we also asked all of, any of the seniors and the class of 2020 to submit any comments they would like to have, and we do have one from Vanessa Acosta at Artesia High School. I'm going to call on Scott Smith at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Sue, I'll read the statement from Vanessa Acosta. Hi, my name is Vanessa Acosta. I am one of the student representatives for Artesia High School. I will be continuing my education at California State University of Long Beach, majoring in biology. I hope to become a blood spatter analyst. That's all.
Thank you so much, Scott. As you well know, we always, um, issue a certificate of recognition for all of their work during this school year. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think we, I can speak for everyone in that we very much enjoy the student board representative reports and we enjoy listening to all the wonderful events happening in our high schools. Okay, at this time, we will move on to spotlight on teaching and learning. Doctor Gina Zitlow?
So, good evening, this is Doctor Zito. And we're so glad to be able to recognize and honor our teachers who are gaining status at the adult school and then our teachers who are gaining tenure, um, in our K-12 program. And so, um, those employees will be receiving, um, a certificate of recognition and, um, we are thankful for all of these employees that are a part of our schools and programs. And so tonight, I'm going to read their names and the programs they're part of and their schools so that, um, we can honor and recognize them. Um, first, from the adult school, the teacher, um, moving into status is Rosalba Barbosa Camacho. For our teachers moving into tenure, from Artesia High School, we have Esteban Adame. From Lille Elementary School, we have Amanda Allen. From Gar High School, we have Lani Ancheta. From Artesia High School, we have Daisy Ione. From Cerritos High School, we have Michelle Bradley. From Gar High School, we have Brian Burks. From Whitman Elementary School, we have Caitlin Turner. From Melbourne Elementary School, we have Ashley Escalante. From Half School Middle School, we have Marla Everidge. From Kennedy Elementary School, we have Victor Fernandez. From Burbank Elementary School, we have Pernali Gonkar. From Gonzales Elementary School, we have Kimberly Gonzalez. From Cerritos High School, we have Nicole Irbarne. From Nemus Elementary School, we have Paige Larkin. From Gonzales Elementary School, we have Diana Leano. From Melbourne Elementary School, we have Isabella Lewis. From Wadis Elementary School, we have Stephanie Luna. From Gar High School, we have Jason Malagmat. From Aloha Elementary School, we have Jennifer Marcus. From Fetty Middle School, we have Maritza Marquez Garcia. From Carmanita Middle School, we have Quinn McCutcheon. From Elliott Elementary School, we have Darian McGibben. From Half School Middle School, we have Angel Mendoza. From Gonzales Elementary School, we have Paul Orsola II, and I believe he's also at Ross. From Cerritos High School, we have Brittany Parker Gooden. From Cerritos High School, we have Teresa Peterson. From Ross Middle School, we have Thomas Phelps. From Willow Elementary School, we have Angelica Rodriguez. From Tetzloff Middle School, we have Mark Ryan. From Whitney High School, we have Allison Schulman. From Gonzales Elementary School, we have Audrey Smith. From Cerritos High School, we have Travis Sossaman. From Ross Middle School, we have Kristen Stroke. From Nixon Elementary, we have Angela, Angeline Tran. From Artesia High School, we have Anna Uralika. From Elliott Elementary School, we have Brian Valdez Gutierrez. From Carmanita Middle School, we have Jackson Woodbury. From Half School Middle School, we have Megan Woodruff. From Gonzales Elementary School, we have Lori Yano. From Nixon Elementary School, we have Jennifer Young. From Gonzales Elementary School, we have Shelley Yu. And from Lille Elementary School, we have Amber Zaldivar. And so again, we want to congratulate, um, and appreciate all of our teachers who received tenure and status this year with ABC Unified. Thank you.
Well, that was a very long list, and again, I think I can speak for the board and if any board members want to make special comments, let me know. But we do know that when a teacher receives tenure, it usually means that that educator has a long history of success working with students. So we look forward to continued, um, working with them in, in our district. Any board comments, if not, we'll move on.
Madam President, I just want to say congratulations to them all.
Great, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of June 2nd, 2020? So move.
Ernie, so move.
Sophie, second.
Roll call please Danielle?
Mr. Apodaca?
Yes?
Mr. La? Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes six to zero.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 5th, 2020?
Sophia, second, oh, second Sophia.
Roll call please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Yes.
Mr. La? Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, superintendent's report, Dr. Sue?
Thank you very much, Rios. I'd like to begin my comments today that as an educational institution, I feel compelled to address the current crisis taking place in cities across our country. We believe this is an opportunity for us to reaffirm what we in ABC stand for and to offer support for our students in this challenging time. We believe deeply in treating all members of our learning communities with the dignity and respect that every human being deserves. We celebrate our diverse makeup of our communities and we embrace each other's differences. Our focus in ABC over the past several years has been on creating connections, student identity, wellness, and perhaps more importantly, a feeling of safety. We want all of our students, staff, and families to know that we care about them and we value their presence in our schools. We also want to encourage our students to seek support as you need it. Please reach out to your friends, family, and our own mental health professionals. It's important and normal to have confused emotions about what is going on across the country. And as parents, I encourage you also to engage in a dialogue and to help them navigate their feelings. That's an important message that I really wanted to share as we are experiencing so much that is going on in our country right now. But as far as, um, this past week, we also received the planning framework from LACO regarding reopening our schools for 2021. The framework is aligned to the CDC's new guidelines for reopening schools. And it's important to recognize that when we reopen in the fall, it's not going to look or even feel like any other school year we've ever had. Some of the guidelines include, for example, masks must be worn for both staff and all students, no sharing of items or supplies, clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces between uses, develop a schedule of increased routine cleaning and disinfection, all belongings separated into individual cubbies or labeled containers, no sharing of electronic devices, toys, games, or learning aids, desks must be six feet apart and all facing the same direction, one child per seat on school buses and skip rows between riders, installing sneeze guards or partitions where six feet apart won't work, one-way routes in hallways, tape on the sidewalks and walls to ensure that kids stay six feet apart, no shared spaces including cafeterias and playgrounds, physical barriers or screens between sinks and bathrooms, only prepackaged boxes or bags of food instead of hot lunch. Kids eat lunch in their classrooms, no field trips, assemblies, or external organizations. Children stay with the same staff all day, no switching groups or teachers, stagger student arrival and departure times to limit crowds of students and limit the number of volunteers and visitors and if possible, daily health and temperature checks. So we recognize that these guidelines will be very challenging as we reopen in the fall. The budget crisis that will be part of all public schools, districts in California will even complicate our efforts as we reopen. We have surveyed all our families in the district as well as all our employees. When we surveyed the families, we wanted to have an idea of how many were interested in continuing an online program or a hybrid model where students could resume in a staggered setting. Their responses will help us determine the direction we will be taking when we reopen in the fall. And we hope to convene a district reopening task force to discuss many of these issues that I just laid out. We are also very pleased to learn that last week, LACO and the Department of Public Health determined that using vehicles or car parades was acceptable for graduations and other special events. We will honor the class of 2020 during the last week of school and I really recommend that families please follow their high schools for further direction. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Sorry, Dr. Sue, can you repeat that? I was distracted for one minute about the task force.
We're, we're going to convene a district reopening task force and will include all of our labor group, um, leaders as well as our administration. And we hope to have some sense of, you know, where we are all together in working through this reopening in the fall.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, um, employee representative report, call, uh, Mr. Ray Gair, ABCFT president.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, President Dr. Rios. ABC School Board Trustees Superintendent Dr. Mary Sue, Administrative Cabinet, ABCFT members are classified brothers and sisters, parents, students, and the ABC community members. My name is Ray Gair, and I'm president of the ABC Federation of Teachers which represents over a thousand members. This June in ABC is like no other end of the school year in the history of this school district. Teachers that are ending their semesters and trimesters after an overnight transition transformed our schools and forced us all as educators, students, and parents to change our thinking about what education is and what we most value about the ways we have always delivered curriculum. ABC is an incredible school district and its teachers and students have always strived for academic excellence. However, over the past couple months, it has become abundantly clear that teaching is more than just pushing out the curriculum. Deep down, we've always known the secret ingredient and we have always created, and sorry, we've created an entire culture of successful collaboration as a district around the concept of relationships and people that matter. Or I should say, all people matter. Today, more than ever, as we're forced to continue to work apart, teachers and their students are looking for new innovative ways on how they can maintain and strengthen the bonds of human contact. School is not just about pacing guides or state testing. Ask any teacher or their students and they'll tell you that it is engagement and the interaction, the social teaching of American values, the connection to all walks of life outside of our own that provide the rich fertilizer for abundant growth. We are all more than just words written in a textbook. We are a community. The ABC Federation of Teachers is currently working with its membership to examine the posted budget that you'll be looking at tonight. We have been educating members about the budget process, the timelines, and the harsh reality that is the impact of COVID-19. The budget reality is both painful but sobering because things just seem to be going so well. But it is our reality and we need to find solutions together. We've been working with the school district administrators and the ABC School Board members to find solutions. Not all the final budget numbers in the state are available and we are still planning without knowing all the real details. However, we all have our eyes wide open as we look together for a path that will light our way in this time of darkness. We hope that you will look at the budget reality, or we know you will, that you'll look at the budget reality and that you'll keep in mind that people matter. And you, we hope that you will work with all of us to find solutions that will not take the livelihood of any of the ABC certificated or classified employees. ABCFT has also formed an SOS, a safely open our schools task force, which is made up of 55 members comprised of teachers from all grade levels, child development teachers, adult school teachers, nurses, and speech and language pathologists. Together, we're exploring and discussing the possibilities of what the next school year will look like for our students and the safety measures all educators and their students need to learn together without the shadow of COVID disrupting our community. This SOS group will also be looking for ways in which we can create equity among our students and employees in ABC. The things we see on TV, the stories we're hearing and the feelings we are all feeling are real and we need to systematically look for new ways to break down the barriers that separate us as humans and those walls that create barriers for those who call us. In this America, we can, these walls cannot stand anymore. It's a time for change. And I hope that ABCFT and our ABC partners can work together to look for lasting solutions. I'm as anxious to continue this meeting as you are, so I just want you to know that with your guiding hand as the ABC School Board, the ABC community will work together to find solutions that protect ABC employees and maintain the learning conditions of our students. I would like to thank you in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, next I'd like to call on Rebecca, Michelle Messia, CSCEA president. Rebecca? Okay, should we go on, Dr. Sue?
Yes, we, we should.
Okay, public comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Persons wishing to address the public, address the board should submit their comments during the public comment period which runs from 8:00 AM to Monday, June 1st, 2020, to 12:00 PM on Tuesday, June 2nd, through one of the following methods. Send an email to publiccomments@abcusd.com. Submit comment through the website, iabcusd.org-publiccomments. Or call 562-584-1145 and leave a voice message, voicemail. Comments submitted will be presented during the public comment section which is limited to one hour and each speaker to one presentation of five minutes unless the board wishes to waive the time limit. Those who have a group concern are encouraged to select a spokesperson to address the board. Comments submitted regarding a specific agenda item will be presented following the staff comments on prior to the board's discussion and taking action. Adverse remarks about a person's race, ancestry, ethnic group identification, religion, color, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender, mental or physical handicap, or age may not be made. Concerns presented to the board will be followed up and addressed by the appropriate staff. Now, we have Officer Scott, Communications Officer Scott Smith.
Thank you very much, Clerk Yu. Good evening, Board President Rio, uh, Board President Dr. Rios and, uh, board members. Tonight, uh, we have received quite a few public comments, in fact, over 250. Uh, in the interest of time, we have grouped some of them together and we'll read several from them. Uh, I will start with the topic of the banned proposed budget cuts to the elementary school and middle school band programs. Uh, there were well over 200, the majority of tonight's public comments submitted were for that, that particular item. So I'll read a few for you, but again, please consider that that was the vast majority of the public comments submitted this evening. The first one is from a student, Angelina Hernandez. Music in ABCUSD has brought many lifelong useful skills such as teamwork, responsibility, creative ways to resolve situations and problems, kindness and positivity towards others, and much more to myself and other musicians. Band allows us students to practice those mentioned skills outside of the classroom and in an environment where we can express those skills and feelings through our instrument. When band begins in elementary, fourth grade, by seventh grade, students have much experience with their instruments which allows middle school band to flow much easier and faster considering the small amount of time we have to practice and learn the ropes before our first competitions. Middle school band procedures and ways are already a big stretch and difficult for those who have been playing since elementary. And with that elementary experience, incoming students from elementary will have even more difficulty. The adrenaline and feeling of performing for others with fellow friends is a feeling like no other and band has given students lifelong skills and memories that will never be forgotten. Again, that was one of our students, Angelina Hernandez. The next, uh, student is Nia McKinstry, and I'll read that now. Good evening, board members, my name is Nia McKinstry. I'm a band, band student at Tetzloff, but also, I came to this district during grade school, particularly when I can start learning an instrument in band. Kids in elementary need this privilege to learn a band instrument so they can learn things that can help them in life. For example, in band, you learn courage. In the elementary band, they do a test and you need courage to believe in yourself. These kids also learn commitment. They need to practice every day to improve their skills. But you always need commitment in daily life, too. All kids have homework to do and yes, they will get tired, but the band kids will push forward and commit to doing their band work to prepare. As a band kid for four years, I think it's always better to start younger so you can advance through as you get to middle school, even high school. If you shut down the band program until they can start in middle school, I think they will lose interest easily and won't get to do the cool and fun things in high school. If you agree to keep the band program open in grade school, it will make a different and better impact on those willingly special band students. If not, people will not get to understand why band is important to fun and others. Thank you, Nia. Again, those were two students. There were, uh, over 200 public comments submitted by parents, uh, grandparents, teachers, and students. I'll move on to the next, uh, we have about, uh, a little over 25 that I'll be reading for you this evening and then we will play a few that came- will play a few that came in on voicemail. The next topic will be athletics, and the public comment was submitted by Jonathan Watanabe. "What is the status of summer athletics? With the school year coming to an end on June 10, 2020, coaches, players, and parents would like to know what, if anything, will be allowed?" The next several items concern the budget. The next public comment was submitted by Ian McDonnell. "The LMTs are an invaluable asset to our district. I think we will suffer beyond what is expected without their expertise and asset management skills available to make sure everything continues to run smoothly during these unprecedented times. Please consider an option that keeps them involved. Thanks." The next public comment was submitted by Yvonne, no last name. "I hear the district will be cutting some teachers from schools due to budget cuts. How do you guys plan on sustaining the amount of students in the district along with making sure they are providing adequate education if there will be less teachers in the district?" The next public comment is submitted by Emily Chen Darnell. "Please do not lay off K through 3rd grade elementary school teachers and thus consolidate the classroom, which leads to bigger class sizes. This strategy runs counter to trying to increase school enrollment for the declining elementary school numbers in this school district. Apart from all school districts needing to meet their teacher-student ratios outlined in the California Education Code 41376, CAEC 41378, AEC 54525, or they will be fined by the state. Parents will look to enroll their children elsewhere, which will deepen the district's low enrollment numbers for the elementary school aged children." The next several items are about school closure and/or the impact of COVID-19 on the district. The first one is from Luisa Villanueva. "I want to express my thanks to all classified staff who have done a tremendous job helping us transition to online learning at home, especially the librarians who made sure to get devices and hotspots to the families and students that needed and asked for them. The LMTs are the ones who keep track of all the technology that leaves our schools, who receive and keep track of any malfunctioning Chromebooks, and who make sure students receive replacement devices so they can keep on learning. Also, a special thank you to the SIAs who have been critical in keeping everyone safe during all services requiring physical interaction. They keep lines orderly and remind us to keep social distance so lines move quickly and safely. You were all essential, and I just want everyone, including the board, to hear that." The next public comment is from Ira De Guzman. "Dear Board of Education, thank you for the opportunity to send in a public comment via email. I am the mother of three students in ABC Unified. These last few months have been unbelievable and have also pushed us all into uncharted territory. The teachers have been amazing, and we thank them and the school district for all the support in continuing the learning at home. I did have one hope for next school year, should the need be to learn from home. My youngest two at Stowers did not have access to tangible books. This made reading and learning in general more challenging. I would look at the computer screen to see numerous tabs open and watch my children click through tabs in order to find what they may have been working on. Although my high schooler may be able to manage this with more control and ease, it took away much time from my 4th grader and 6th grader. My hope is that hard copies of books and materials are available to students at home to learn online. Thank you for your time and all the efforts the district and all the personnel have put forth in these unprecedented times. Best regards." The next item is from Min Lee. "We are in an unprecedented time, COVID-19, for our students, and the key to slowing the virus is social distancing right now. I understand that there will be changes for the upcoming school year. Have you considered limiting our school to only Cerritos residents? When my son started at Gansalves, there was 23 to 25 students, and now he has 30 in his class. It has grown significantly over time. I know for a fact there is a significant portion of the student body coming from outside of Cerritos. With a smaller class size, we can properly allow social distancing for students in class and other shared areas." The next item is on the recent data breach, data breach we experienced through ARI's Communications. It is from Selish Patel. "I have children who attend Carmonita Middle School and Cerritos High School. I would like to know the details of the ARI's data breach beside what was said in the email that was sent out. I would like to know how it happened and why our IT staff could not contain it. I would like to know who specifically in the IT department is responsible for data security. Mr. Spriggs sends out emails indicating everything is okay, however, he doesn't address who is at fault or who is going to get fired because of it. I don't appreciate having my data hacked from the ABC Unified servers. I consider the ABC Unified response to this issue lackluster. I would appreciate a prompt answer." The next several items are on the grading policy. The first one is from Terry Ahome. "I am not happy with the district's stand on the hold harmless policy for those students taking the higher level classes like AP. Those students who are performing well are hurt by this policy by not allowing a GPA boost. Other districts are allowing this boost in GPA. Now, if an ABC student is attempting to get a scholarship, which is heavily weighted on GPA, they might now receive this scholarship due to the board's decision of hold harmless. It would be great if the district allows the student to receive this boost in GPA. Also, will the district again hold this hold harmless policy next school year if the decision is made to go online again?" The next is from Ethan Zhang. "Dear ABC Board, thank you for presenting my comments. I'm a 10th grader at Cerritos High School, and I would like to ask if there's a chance for a makeup period to amend my letter grade notation request. I accidentally missed the deadline for the request, and some of my schoolmates are in the same situation. Your consideration is much appreciated." The next few items are on graduation. The first one is from Melissa Shaw. "On behalf of my daughter, who is graduating from Garrett High School, I am voicing my complaint in that there will be no graduation ceremony. The football field is large enough to accommodate the students and a few family members. We are requesting that the board reconsider and give these well-deserving students a proper send-off." The next one is from Norval Bennett. "Hello, I just wanted to know, will the seniors be given a real graduation or prom and the guidelines open up from this pandemic? Thank you." The next item is from Matthew Scamahorn. "I have heard that the ABC School Board is considering the creation of a task force to combat racism. As a Cerritos resident and an ABC school alumni, having attended Leo, Tetslaw, and graduated from Cerritos High School in 2018, I would like to show support for the school board in taking steps to address racial inequalities. It's clear that racism is rampant across the United States, but a lot of folks living within the boundaries of the ABC School District don't acknowledge the racism present in our own communities. In elementary school, I remember being conditioned by community members and classmates to view certain schools in our district with resentment. Unsurprisingly, the schools in question, such as Tetslaw or Garrett High School, were more diverse than Carmonita or Cerritos High School. Simply put, this disdain was fueled by racism, which continues to be an epidemic in our community. The creation of a task force to dispel these attitudes is a necessary step in making sure that every student, teacher, and administrator, regardless of race, feels welcome in our school system. We pride ourselves on being part of a school district that has given countless students educational opportunity, myself included. However, if we want our school district to continue living up to its reputation, we must take steps to address racial injustice in our community. A task force that includes teachers, administrators, and most importantly, students, will only help strengthen our school's roots with members of our diverse community while preparing our students with the social awareness needed to be a productive global citizen." The next several items are on school reopening. "No hybrid learning, no online learning. My daughter didn't learn anything by this method. We need in-person learning. My son is a senior at Garrett High. He will not participate neither in the virtual or drive-through ceremony. Very, very, very sad and upsetting. Our seniors once are not being considered, and to whoever decided to go along with this drive-through ceremony truly didn't consider all the 12 years of hard work students and parents put into getting to this point. An in-person ceremony is the only and right way to recognize our kids and parents. Thank you." The next one is from Yacine M. Almadani. "I understand that people have different views about the issues of schools reopening, and I appreciate you allowing me to share some candid thoughts as a concerned parent. The CDC is under a lot of pressure to issue guidelines for reopening, but six feet of distancing in a closed environment is insufficient to prevent the spread of COVID-19. This is a novel virus that we are just beginning to understand. The latest reporting tells us that mere loud talking can thrust the virus 20 feet or more away, and it can stay airborne for up to 14 minutes. In a closed environment with a forced air system, the virus will be picked up by the air returns and circulated throughout the entire school. Credible studies have shown this to occur. Given the physics of how this virus spreads and the fact that it can spread through asymptomatic carriers, no amount of plexiglass or social distancing is going to truly protect our children, teachers, administrators, and us. Adding to that is the concern that people not categorized as high-risk are also dying from this pandemic. This includes children. Even one child dying due to infection from reopening is one too many. This holds true for parents, grandparents, teachers, and administrators. No one wants to look back two years from now, when we have a vaccine, and regret losing a parent, child, or spouse when it can be prevented. Online home learning is the safest option. However, I understand that some folks are unable to sustain online home learning and want to reopen. I think we are putting everyone at risk if we do that, even with a hybrid system. But if we must, then we must also give parents who are concerned about the infection the option to continue online schooling exclusively from home with the help of school and teachers. This would accomplish several things. Because some children will be able to stay home, it will make it easier to have smaller classroom sizes for the children whose parents do want them to physically attend school, and lesser children at school will lessen the chances for infection all around." I'm going to keep that short due to time limits. The next one has no name attached, excuse me, George Lee. "Dear sir or madam, I received the survey for which school attending method for the next school year. Instead of choosing one option, I hope our school district can give parents and kids another option to study at home or to go to school based on family needs. The COVID-19 pandemic will be a big health issue for family before we have a vaccine."
I'll give a second for comment after Scott's finished.
Okay. I'm not sure, was that the end, Scott?
No, not yet, not yet. Sorry, the screen was bothering me here. We have another, we have several more. "Dear council members, I am writing this letter on behalf of families in the ABC Unified School District who wish to retain the right to take online classes at home during the fall of 2020. We propose that the ABC Unified School District offer two options simultaneously in order to meet the different needs of families. This would be like a model of the Cal State University system. If the ABC Unified School District can offer two options simultaneously in the fall of 2020, then they would be able to meet the needs of both sides, that is, the side who has concerns about COVID-19 and relatives' health with the option for online learning at home only, as well as the other side, the parents who have work schedules or who have meal issues for their children and wish to choose the option to let their children go to school. I hope your council members will be able to help us deliver our voice and promote this idea successfully to the ABC School District and our council." I'm going to move on to the next one, still with school reopening or school closure. "Hello, one of the ABC School Board members, Sophia Seay, is using social media asking for comment suggestions for tonight's school board meeting. While the meeting organizers have already sent out an email posted on ABC Unified School District website, ways to make public comments, why is she asking members of the community to provide comments and not asking them to use the public comments section or option? One of the community members sent out an attached file in social media proposing two simultaneous options for school reopening. However, it doesn't have any signatures or names who proposed it. Thank you." The next one is from Christina Denny. "Hello, everyone. Just went to ask how safe my son will be when she goes, or my daughter will be when she goes back to school. Can I just continue keeping her home and do homeschooling until they come out with a new vaccine? She's a fragile kid and really needs to, and we really need to protect her from getting sick. I hope I can get some answers. Thank you and have a nice day." The next one is from Joel Dandy. "I understand the health concerns and appreciate the care that will go into watching out for our children next school year. However, it feels like no one will address working parents' concerns and childcare issues. My job has had massive layoffs. However, I still currently have my job, and my husband does too right now. It seems like the few people that still have jobs now have to worry about half-day schools or complete days off. I also got a call that the preschool we applied to at Carver will only be part-time and charge more money. We have been struggling and are using work-vacation days and grandparents to help finish off this school year. For summer, the local day camps have been canceled. The few that are running, including the EDP option, are charging so much money even though they canceled all the field trips. Now to find out that next year will be a hybrid is crushing our family right now. I truly hope that affordable daycare will be an option, and the board will find ways to help working families navigate this difficulty." And this is the last one I'll read, and then we'll have several voicemails that will be played. "Dear Dr. Sue and school board members, I am writing this letter to express my concern and frustration with the recent Whitney selection criteria for the 2020-2021 school year. I feel that test scores from more than one year ago are not indicative of the student's current educational skills and knowledge. Without any doubts, I know that my son has greatly matured the past 12 months and has been more disciplined in his studies. In addition, during the past 12 months, he has participated in academic programs outside of the school setting in order to prepare him academically for a rigorous middle school program. These programs were recommended and endorsed by his elementary school principal. He is disheartened and was in tears that after so many months of intense studying that he would not be afforded an opportunity to show that his hard work has paid off. It saddens me to tell him the news that the district is complacent in using outdated test scores to assess his current standing and is not using other methods. We are not alone in feeling this way. When discussed amongst other parents in this outside academic program, they also feel that by using last year's test scores, it negates all the learning from the last eight months in the 2019-2020 school year. An additional matter of concern is that the district is allowing the 10th and 11th grade students to take a secured online alternative assessment but not using a similar platform for other grades. Although there may be a logistic reason, I would think something similar can be applied for the other grades. I truly feel that there needs to be current test scores or assessments. I appreciate your time in allowing me to express my concerns and hope that the school administrators can discuss alternate assessments beside using past year's test scores. Whitney has always been a symbol of excellence, and selecting high-caliber students should be top priority. I know I am proud to live in Cerritos and proud to have my daughter currently attending Whitney. Sincerely, parents of 6th grader." Now, I will ask Joe Machado to play the voicemails.
Ming long. I'm calling regarding the survey results. And I'd like to put in some input, also concern of children being exposed to the virus. Also, you know, the environment taking... Children coming home with the stress involved for them. And would like to, you know, voice my opinion on having full-time online classes. If parent or parents wish. Some of us are in the... Have the opportunity to do this from home. And would also relieve the stress on the schools by leaving more room for, you know, social distancing. And again, voicing my concern on this matter. And hopefully, the results of the survey will be forthcoming soon so parents can make decisions on which route they're going to take if they do not wish to have their children attending. Thank you very much.
Hello. I'm a parent of the ABC school. I just would like to know for the coro... Because the coronavirus, I think for the teachers and the students are safe and healthy, I recommend you online academy. My name is Sun Yung Hong. I'm a parent of ABC school. Thank you. Have a nice day. Bye.
Shiva Bart, parent of junior high school, Surritos High School. Good evening, Dr. Mary Sue, board members. Dear residents, my name is Shiva Bart. As you know, a lot of you know me by name, and a lot of you know me by my face. When I joined PTA for the first time as a parent, someone told me that you are not your child's... You are your child's only advocate. And after all these years of being on the PTA and getting my voice heard for lots of kids in our community, finally, it's time for my voice to be heard for my own child. Do you know the process of starting a club in a high school? Do you know the amount of time it takes a child to work? Not on just his club placement, application, constitution, plans, detailed plans of events? The whole year what the club is going to be... Is he or she is going to be proposing? Months is the answer. Also, let me remind you, there's no guidance in this detail, guidance, for any of these. And let me remind you that for no particular valid logical reason, your child's club could be denied. There is no rule on how many clubs you can have in a school, which means you can have unlimited clubs in a school. And yet, your child's club could be denied for no valid logical reason. My son is in a similar situation where he wants to start a club, and he's always wanted to do something on health awareness, which includes general health awareness, physical health awareness, mental health awareness, basic vitals, et cetera. Now, mind you, my child has done something like this before in a public setting as an Eagle Scout, where he was awarded a proclamation by the city of Surritos. These are the same exact ideas he's bringing in a little vast form to the Surritos High School so that he can break awareness to his community at school.
Just a reminder, board members, that the feedback you're getting is due to not muting. If you could hit four-star, and then we won't get the feedback. We only have a few more to play. Thank you.
Do you know what happened? Application denied. You know what happened to the denial? He'd of course reapplied. Appeal denied. With words used like "this is not feasible" and "impossible to host legitimately." As a parent, these words blew my mind. Because this is not just a project he has done successfully, but they are calling this and having issues and calling their names like legitimacy. Now, this is pointing fingers at my child and telling him that, hey, this is nonsense and bogus, and stop it. He was also told that this is comparing it to a club like HOSA, which he's also a part of. But remember, HOSA is a nationally renowned club which focuses on guiding a student into a healthcare profession. It's an academic club. It is not a community service club. He was also compared to NAMI. NAMI is there to support for people affected by mental illness, and this comes under special interest club. This is not a community service club. My son's club is a community service club. Where is the fairness in these times where fairness and equality is of most importance? A child is being denied for no valid logical reason. My husband and I are one of those parents who gives the benefit of the doubt to the school. Let's tell him, you must have done something wrong, or hey, reapply, or retalk, or hey, talk to the authorities. Didn't work. Today, I tell the school board and our officials who are handling this matter, whether it is ASB or whoever the counselor or whatever you're doing, please, look into your facts. Your facts are wrong here. And I ask you, the school board members, and us to prevent and not to take this lightly because this is definitely another wing of education where we are teaching our kids to be leaders for tomorrow. This is not giving a child an opportunity to even groom as a leader. My child is not going to stop because he has parents like my husband and I. And the PTA parent in me now is thinking about all those hundreds of kids who might have been denied and not guided. They don't even know how to fight for themselves. They don't know how to ask for help. We've gone through proper channels where we've spoken to advisor, the principal, and constantly been told that this is a third medical club, and that's why you can't have it, even though the other two are not community service. The population of this school is 2,000, I think. My child was also sent a big paragraph deny... In the denied email, saying he should not be ceasing the principal because the principal has no authority or influence over decision-making. I am unable to comprehend this idea. This is not the America we live in. And this is the exact reason things are happening in our country where we're fighting for our rights. Please, give it a thought.
Here, Chairman. Good evening, Board President Maria, Board members, Superintendent Sue, and community members. My condolences to the family of George Floyd. It is ironic that in 1980, the people from the US protested against the brutality in South Africa and apartheid. Today, South Africans are protesting the treatment of African-Americans.
Is this just me? But it's very hard to hear.
This event is more than just...
If you could all mute your phones.
Mute your phones, and Scott, you might want to play that comment again so we can all hear it. Thank you.
Joe, can you rewind that comment? Thank you.
There's still extensive feedback. Does anybody have their phone here or a computer?
We just need to mute all the... All right, Joe. Could you please try to replay that?
And this is the exact reason things are happening in our country where we're fighting for our rights. Please, give it a thought.
Jesus, Mary, and Joseph.
Good evening, Board President Maria, Board members, Superintendent Sue, and community members. My condolences to the family of George Floyd. It is ironic that in 1980, the people from the US protested against the brutality in South Africa and apartheid. Today, South Africans are protesting the treatment of African-Americans in the US. This event is more than just police brutality, but is also that institution that failed minorities at all levels of government, including education. Today's discussion is going to be about the budget. One of the rumors on the street or social media is that the district is facing 25% cut or that the district would become bankrupt. What a load of rubbish. At a time when the world is demanding transparency from all institutions, I hear double speak about the rights of adults and negotiations are needed. So who is negotiating the needs of the students? At the last meeting, you called out the smaller unions for the salary increases with dollars and cents, and then quickly rushed through the pay increase of other staff with percentages and concluded a portion in haste. Transparent or not, you tell me. Let me give you another example. Sinks for schools, which will be discussed today. Has anyone asked how many sinks do we have? How many were working? How many are being replaced or added? How much of that cost should be shared between the COVID funds, the district reserve, and Prop BB funds? Let me remind you that the reserve was not created by a philanthropic trust but by taking away portion of the student's allocation on an annual basis so that you could use it on a rainy day. It's raining. The reserve is not your piggy bank. You should be willing to share and use it when needed. Don't be a Trump-tician and conjure falsehood devoid of real data. To paraphrase Eric B. and Rakim, "I'm not a donut, so don't try to glaze me." I'm not buying your assumption of fiscal instability. The reserves you have must be put to use now, otherwise there was no purpose in having it. If you believe you are in such dire financial crisis, please have FICMAT come in and evaluate your financial records. Second, if the district does become bankrupt and the state takes it over, what will happen? Nothing. Schools will still operate. Teachers will still get paid. Principals will be paid, and life will go on as it does in Inglewood. Unfortunately, the board and the leadership will not be needed until you become fiscal insulted. I do not want the district to become bankrupt financially, but I do question your moral bankruptcy. Those that came from poor families learned to share food and shelter, and it still remains the same. It's the rich who can't open up the purse because they must have a big balance. Learn to share and keep all of our programs in tank. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Hydon G. I live in Surritos Beach Street. I have a daughter currently enrolled in Bonzal Elementary School. We receive a survey regarding the school after the summer break. There's two options. One is the online program, the other one is so-called hybrid. So I'm very surprised to see that going back to school full-time is not even an option. So I'm a little concerned that the school district is leaning towards keeping the kids at home. And we... My wife and I are both working, so we've got some really difficulties to cope with that. I hope that the school district at least considers going back to school full-time is at least an option. That's all. Thank you.
That was the last public comment.
Okay. We don't normally comment on public comments, but I do notice that some of our board members wanted to speak. So Chris, did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Well, we're not allowed to engage in back and forth. I don't have any comments. I'd like to ask for a clarification from our superintendent, Dr. Mary Sue. You know, there's quite a few comments with regard... Public comments tonight with regards to the physical ceremonies. Dr. Sue, are we delaying or holding off on our physical graduation ceremonies out of a lack of respect or minimizing the 12 years of accomplishments of our students? Are we simply saying no? We will not have graduations because it is not a milestone?
There... Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. There is no assemblage of people. They definitely do not want any stadium graduations. That's when I... When I mentioned in my report tonight that LACO and the Center for Public Health said that we are allowed to do a car parade during graduation.
Thank you, Dr. Sue. So just to clarify, because again, this isn't engaging or responding directly, I just want to clarify and make sure that we, as a district, even if we wanted to have in a stadium with ample space for social distancing for those involved in their close family, even if we wanted to, we would not be able to as a public school district.
That is correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. And also to clarify, Tuan, our CFO, if I may ask... Actually, you know what? I'll hold off until the budget. That's an action item. I'll go forward to that. And then I have one small request for our public information officer, communications officer. You know, there were literally hundreds of folks that reached out to us, and I responded to, I believe, most of them. A few may have trickled in the last few hours. I think that we owe it to the public, even though they weren't read tonight, if we could post it on our website or in some other public medium so that way all public comments submitted could be heard and read by the public. Thank you.
Yes, we can do that.
President...
Go ahead, Sophia.
Thank you. It's another clarification since we have so many parent concern about online and hybrid education. I think this will be the next June 12 or 16 meeting. Am I right? The topic will be presented next meeting.
I'm not sure whether we will have the entire scope of the, you know, 2021 school year's plan yet. But one of the things that was recommended is that we have a special study session in July.
So that'll be in July?
To talk about... To talk about the reopening of our schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those clarification, board members. Yes, go ahead.
Now, really quick. So it seems that we have about one hour allowed... Allowed for public comments. I think we have maybe 15, 20 minutes left. There were 250 public comments on the band. I think we only heard two. Not that it's going to do that much, but I think we have time for a few more. Would that be possible to hear just a few more? Just so we get a little representative sample? We do have a few minutes.
I do have to defer that... I do have... I do need to defer that to Scott. And keep in mind that we do recommend that collective concerns be grouped together. So I know that we absolutely heard loud and clear the need in our community to save the band program.
But I would argue, if I may, Madam President, that it should also be representative of all trustee areas. I can't imagine that the two comments that were shared are representative of all seven trustee areas. Thank you.
And, Madam President, just...
Yeah. No, if Scott had commented, that's a fair request.
Madam President, one more quick thing. If we could hear the potential comments that provided a resolution or some way we can resolve the issue, that would be great as well, if you can sort through that.
What resolution?
Anything. Just something where we have... I understand the importance of band. If there's anybody who has a way to resolve it in terms of the public comments, I would love to hear it.
Oh, got it. Okay. So we'll let's first hear from Scott. Scott, can you read a few more comments?
I certainly can. And Board Member Nishigee, I don't know if there's anything that's specific. It's mostly about continuing the funding, but I'll try to address that.
And also address Board Member Apadaka's concern about representative of board areas. I don't know if you can work through that?
I will do my best.
Got it. Thank you.
Let me find one here. Bear with me. Okay. This again is on band. It's from Andrew Perry. I personally benefited greatly from being a member of the elementary school music program during my youth. My two sons both began in the fourth grade, and it is obvious that the... My two sons both began in the fourth grade, and it is obvious that the same benefits of self-discipline, intellectual curiosity, and creativity are fostered greatly through a music program. I would definitely prefer to see sports programs put on the back burner before music. Please do what you can to save elementary school music programs. I would even contribute money out of my own pocket to help retain these services of such great teachers like Mr. Gullett. Here's one from Tammy Lee. The music education during elementary years for my kid changed her life. She never had a private music lesson. Her interest of music was purely created by the elementary music education. She's now in the 10th grade band at Whitney High School and enjoys playing her flute and trumpet every day. Please continue the music education for ABCUSD elementary kids. Please let them have the opportunity to have the early music education in school easily. The next one is from Tony DeFritis. Good evening. I wanted to make some comments on why I feel it's crucial to keep our music programs in our schools. Please consider the following benefits of our music program. Eliminating elementary music will greatly reduce the quality and size of our middle school programs, limiting the ability of those groups to successfully represent the district in high-profile performances and competitions. Students in the top middle school band will only have played their instrument for one year. Participating in band promotes self-confidence, teamwork, social skills, a sense of belonging, self-discipline, a sense of accomplishment, responsibility, and commitment, which has never been more important in the current climate. Students who take band are more likely to stay engaged in school and perform better in other academic subjects like math, science, and reading. Music challenges students to think creatively and to solve problems by imagining various solutions. They are skills highly sought of by 21st century employers. Music keeps students involved in a positive educational activity, which contributes to participants having the lowest levels of current and lifelong use of alcohol, tobacco, and illicit drugs among any group in our society. Please consider these points for kids involved in music programs. The next one is from Hannah Santos. My name is Hannah Santos. I am in ninth grade attending CHS. I've been in band for six years. I started in fourth grade playing the alto sax. I enjoy playing it and strive to get better. When I got to middle school, I became more and more passionate every second. Band taught me leadership skills, and Mr. Gullett did a great job teaching us discipline. Band has been a huge part of my school life. This opportunity shouldn't be taken away from these young children because it helps literacy skills and strengthens, strengthens memory power. Another reason why I don't think it should be taken away is because it would affect middle and high school bands. If the opportunity gets taken away, Ted Sloth Marching Band would be greatly affected. And two students would have an instrument and much more, and faster. The band wouldn't be as good as if, as to if students started learning at a younger age. Next, middle school kids have more choices other than band. As we're in elementary, band is really the only extracurricular activity you can do, other than track. More people would join, unlike in middle school where you have more choices. Lastly, high school band would also be affected because when you join a band in high school, most of the students have been in band for five to six years. They have experience, uh, playing their instrument. Class would be a lot smaller and could cause high school bands to move down a division. Therefore, I have lots of reasons as to why bands shouldn't be cut down or shut down for young children. Please think about this. Thank you. Here's one, uh, from Scott Moreau. Both of my children have loved their band experience. Mr. Hallback, the music teacher from Carver, has been an exceptional teacher as well as motivator in their learning and playing of music. Moreover, my son has built strong relationships with mutual lovers of music because of the musical foundation and friendships he found in elementary band. To get banned from our school's budget is to limit what our children can become. I'm trying to find a few more. I know we're coming up on the time limit. I would, uh, this is from Luciana Ocampo. I would like to express my sadness in the possible budget cut for the music programs in our elementary schools. My son has been in the program for the last two years and has taken so much pride in his lessons and skill. The music program has given him exposure to different instruments and music that he might not have found in normal music lessons or classes. He enjoys working with Mr. Fernandez each week and looks forward to going to, onto the advanced level when he returns in the fall. I'll give you, I think we have time for maybe one more. I'm looking for a specific one. Uh, this is from Daniel Choi. To the ABC School Board Members, I hope this email finds you well. My name is Daniel Choi, and I have a daughter that attends Whitman Elementary School. She's in fourth grade and started her music education this 2019-2020 school year. I believe learning about music and playing her instrument has had a significant impact on her overall learning and creativity. I believe learning about music and how to play her instrument is an art that should be learned, shared, and cherished. I am saddened and disappointed that there is talk of suspending such an important and life-impacting art as music band class. Please not overlook the negative impact that would result from suspending music class. I've taught my daughter to always try her best and never give up. And the Whitman Elementary Band has given her and her classmates the capability to expand their learning with confidence and creativity, only attainable through the teaching of music and band. The sudden suspension of music would contradict this ideology that I have preached and taught in her life. Vote with an understanding that you have the responsibility of school board members to first and foremost preserve, preserve and encourage an environment of comprehensive learning. I sincerely ask of you, on behalf of all present, future music band practitioners, to vote to continue to support music education in our ABC elementary schools. I think we're coming up on that time. Limit, would you like to hear one more?
Apadaka, yes.
Okay. Uh, to our dear board members, this letter is in reference to proposed suspension of ABCUSD elementary band program due to district budget cuts. On behalf of my family, we would like to express our request to try every effort for this proposal not to come into effect. I have three kids who all went to Nixon. My eldest son did not join band because I was ignorant about the program. He did not start to join until middle school in Whitney and was having a hard time catching up with the others who started in fourth grade, hence quit the following year. That was one of my biggest regrets. Now, we encourage, so we encouraged our second one to join when he was in the fourth grade. My goal was to reduce his fidgeting with his hands, increase focus, and reduce video game time. He joined percussion, continued at Haskell Middle School, and now is sophomore at Gar. We are very proud of, proud of him to be part of Front Ensemble Gar Marching Band, of which he is very passionate about. This inspired my youngest daughter, who is currently a fifth grader at Nixon, to join and follow in his footsteps. We salute Mrs. Kessinger, Mr. Hallback, Ms. Batalla, and most especially, Mr. Darren Looney for putting up with the kids, teaching them to play harmonically, uh, harmoniously, excuse me, disciplined and professional, professional. Uh, to compete and to inspire. Our family are immigrants who originally came from a third world country we're in. The only way to learn music or play an instrument is to own one and pay for private lessons. We believe this program is as important as the other school programs. Music is a therapy. We are all going to need it sometime in our life. Let's continue to prime our younger generation by having it available within their grasp. Mary Gonzalez.
Thank you, Scott. Um, do we have any further comments from the board? If not, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? So move, Mendoza.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Apadaka?
Can we pull an item?
Yeah, that was listed. Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to remove an item to be considered separately?
Yes, this is already 3.90.
Okay, what was that again? 3.9?
C.
C.
Actually, they're all, so 3.9.
Okay, so roll call, please.
Mr. Apadaka?
Aye.
Mr. La? Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes, six to zero.
Okay, item 3.9C is up for discussion?
Yes, I just have a few questions real quick. I probably should have asked this before. Um, so there's a reduction of $311,000, uh, to the Laco, uh, this Head Start contract. And that's to finish off this year because we didn't have any, uh, attendance at the Kennedy Head Start? Is that what is, uh, this is reflecting, $300,000 because we didn't have anybody at Kennedy?
Good evening, Board Member Mr. Nishi. This is Dr. Mayfield. I'll respond to that question. Um, this reduction is due to a couple of factors. One being that with the shift to COVID-19 and school closure, um, there were some contract, um, projects that were scheduled that were postponed because we weren't able to meet some of the deadlines. Um, as well as you've indicated, um, there were services like for materials and supplies for classrooms that weren't necessarily needed because of, um, the teaching was not so, um, in a building per se, but, um, online. And so we were able to still address a lot of those factors. And so we, we, um, were able to provide the resources that students needed as well as complete some projects, even though the funds were, um, taken back to the county office.
Okay. And then follow up. So then the following fiscal year, 2020 to 2021, that 311 is probably going to be restored?
Yes, that should be restored.
Thank you. That's all I had. That's all. Um, thank you, Madam President. I'm ready to vote on this item.
Sorry, it was on mute. Okay, can I have a motion to approve item 3.9C? So move, Mendoza.
So move.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Apadaka?
Aye.
Mr. La?
Aye.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero.
Moving on to information items, at this time, I would like to open a pa, public hearing for the preliminary budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Mr. Wan?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Rios. Uh, before I present, um, the, uh, Ms. Rebecca Michelle Macias, the president of, uh, the classified, uh, group CSEA, was trying to speak earlier, um, and address the board. Due to, uh, technical difficulty, she was not able to. She asked the board president to allow her to speak at this point before I present, if that's acceptable to you.
Yes, um, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Rebecca, if you can hear me, you on. Rebecca, I think you have to press four star to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, see, that's the part I didn't get. Can you hear me now?
We, we can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, President Rios, for allowing this exception. I apologize for not being able to get it done at the appropriate time. But I think it's imperative, and this is why I had asked if there was any way that I would get to speak. So at this point, I would like to address you, President Rios, Dr. Sue, and the esteemed, esteemed board members by, uh, explaining or to express, uh, the situation that the classified staff of the ABC Unified School District is in, um, during this time. I would like to take the opportunity to thank all our members, working both remotely and at our ABC sites, for all the hard work and dedication they continue to give during our time of uncertainty. I want to express how proud I am to work alongside our members and share with them that I am not quite sure where this journey is leading us, but we will all get there together. Um, our members, along with our union brothers and sisters from ABCFT and AFSPY, are the force that ensures the education of our students. We are all essential workers, and so we understand our role to support all areas of teaching and supporting the education of our students, and most importantly, their safety. Later on tonight, you will be asked to make a decision, a decision which will definitely affect the livelihood of those ABC employees who have been hitting the pavement with their boots on to support the meal program for our students, to make sure that our students and our campuses remain safe and maintain a sound environment for those who, who need to be in our facilities. The SIA's of this district take pride in ensuring that all their campuses are safe from harm and ensure that our students are able to get to and from school to receive the education that they need and deserve. Our library, media, techs, and clerks provide the much-needed reading time away from class for, um, away from class for many primary students. Uh, the library is the first place where they learn to love reading. We can all be grateful to our elementary library techs for the primary library and learning experience. Learning to read isn't, isn't always a one-size-fits-all. Our media techs invest much time and energy into finding the best books to engage our students and instill the love to read. They also provide an invaluable, invaluable resource for, um, schools by keeping track of their reading material and keep track of digital devices. They make sure that those devices are in good working condition, and when needed, they either make the repairs themselves or work directly with the IT personnel to get them repaired or replaced. That being said, we are extremely grateful to work for a district who has always been, excuse me, the role model for other schools due to its academic accolades. Excuse me. I am for, I am a firm believer in it because of its collaborative and equitable belief, that this is because of its collaborative and equitable belief in how we do business, for investing in our employees, making it possible to attain the benefits of those outstanding ac, academics achievements. I, I apologize. So I implore you to vote this evening with your conscience to do the right thing by those who have been on the front line and served our student staff and our community in many ways, with a heartfelt consideration for those around us who are in need of our services and who may be less fortunate. We pride ourselves on collaboration and being mindful of our ABC family. We are thankful for having the union brothers and sisters we do because it means we stand together in solidarity. We only ask that you do what you need to do by being equitable. I realize that this very difficult situation we are in, I realize this very difficult situation we are in, and I am confident because we are all in it together, you will do the right thing. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I am definitely, we were happy that we were able to hear your comments. Um, Mr. Wen, are you ready to continue?
Thank you, Dr. Rios, I am. So, uh, if you can, um, be referred back to the PowerPoint presentation that I sent out, uh, to you. Uh, this PowerPoint presentation is also being posted on the district website, um, under Board Meetings Agenda for those who wish to, uh, follow the presentation. I will refer to the page number as I go through, um, my presentation. So I will begin the presentation on page two, uh, Dr. Rios. So, uh, California and of course, uh, the entire country was enjoying unprecedented economic expansions, uh, longest on the records, approaching eleven years of economic expansions. And, uh, you know, uh, as of, uh, January of this year, when the governor proposed this budget, the state was enjoying a four billion dollars surplus into, uh, the budget year. But all that, as you know, all came to a halt and an end because of, uh, the health pandemic. So, um, the state is facing, um, very difficult, um, fiscal times, and that, uh, the unemployment rate, uh, in California, according to the governor, will be approaching about twenty-four point five percent, um, when this is all said and done. Uh, for your reference, um, when we had the great recessions that began in two thousand and eight, the highest unemployment rate in California was twelve point eight percent. And now, according to the governor, uh, it, it could be as high as twenty-four point five percent. So on page three, uh, as I mentioned, for the current year, which is nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and the budget year twenty twenty one, the state is facing a combined forty-one point two billion dollars in lost revenues. So that is their lost revenues, uh, over the two years. Plus with an increase in caseloads, uh, instead of a four point bill, four billion dollars surplus that they were enjoying, uh, a few months ago, now the state is, uh, looking at a fifty-four billion dollars shortfall. Um, at the height of the great recession, again, compared back to twelve years ago, uh, when Governor Brown took office, the, um, shortfall was twenty-five billion dollars. So now, in, uh, that take a few years to build up to that, and now over a three-month period, the state, um, is facing a fifty-four billion dollar shortfall. So just so you know how, how severe and how drastic, uh, this financial crisis is. Uh, on page four, so the good news is that we have learned, or the state have learned, uh, from the past, and instead of having a lot of debt, they actually entering this, um, recessions with, um, a budget stabilization account or a reserve, uh, that is also higher, higher than they ever have before. So the governor has a sixteen point two billion dollar reserve that, um, like one speaker comment, that will be, that's there for a time like this, and he, uh, proposed to spend it over the next three years, uh, spending down the reserve, uh, over the next three years, also, um, signaling that, uh, the financial crisis that we in, uh, may not be over, uh, for three years. And that's what his spending plan is, spend it down over a three-year period, the reserve. Page five, um, outline the total revenue expected, uh, at the state level for the general fund, uh, of one hundred and twenty-nine point six billion dollars in total revenues. Again, the big, uh, three, uh, of taxes for the state would be the personal income tax, which includes capital gains at seventy-six point eight billion dollars, sales tax at twenty point six, and corporation tax at thirteen point nine. And as you can see, compared to last year, uh, the personal income tax and sales tax, um, took a large, um, reductions because of the situation that we are in. Um, on the expenditure side, on page six, uh, K Trump Education, always, um, about forty percent of the state budget, the highest, um, expenditures, uh, forty-seven point seven billion, although it is a decrease, uh, from about fifty-four billion dollars in the current year. Higher education at fifteen point four billion, also a decrease. Health and Human Services, uh, because of the situation we in, actually, um, seeing an increase of about four billion dollars. It's going from forty bi- forty billion dollar in the current year to forty-five point three in the budget year. Uh, the governor has outlined his priority, or the priority of the state, would be, uh, public health, public safety, and public education. We are part of his priority, um, unfortunately, we are on third, on the list, and, and, um, although we see on the priority, it's not as high as, as the other two, understandably so, because, uh, the focus right now should be on public health and public safety, and of course, public education. On page seven, we'll give you, um, a snapshot of, uh, education funding, of Prop ninety-eight funding, uh, since two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. Uh, we bottomed out in, uh, two thousand and eleven and twelve at forty-seven point three billion, uh, and it has been going up ever since. We never looked back until this year. So the, uh, pinket bar, whatever that, uh, shows that instead of, um, we were expected to receive eighty-four billion dollars, and now it is seventy point five billion. So of almost fourteen billion dollars drop in one year, taking the funding back, uh, all the way to twenty fifteen, sixteen. So we were making all this progress, uh, and fully fund the LCFF program by Governor Brown, and in a short period of time, uh, it took, we took a step, or five years back in term of education funding. So this chart show you how drastic the cut, uh, is for education for this year. So on page eight, I'm gonna, of course, share with you the bad news up front. Is that, uh, across the board, ten percent cut, or reduction in the LCFF or Local Control Funding Formula Fund, uh, both apply to the base and the supplemental and concentration grants. Um, on top of that, at least a ten percent reduction to all the other categorical programs, such as the Adult School Program, the ACES After-School Program, the CTE Incentive, uh, Grant Program. Uh, I think that one, um, took the biggest cut of about fifty percent. So, um, that's what the governor proposed, uh, on May fourteen, which is a ten percent reduction again, uh, on the LCFF, and at least ten percent reduction in all the other categorical programs. So, uh, on page nine, there was some good news in his budget proposal or made revisions. He recognized that for the longest time, education, um, uh, special education has been, um, very underfunded by both the federal government and the state. So he proposed a fifteen percent increase in special education funding, or about two point three million dollars for ABC. Uh, this, uh, still, uh, far short of the, um, uh, of the needs because, uh, right now, the general fund base still help out or contributed about nineteen million dollars into this program. That, that is, um, how much underfunded the program is. Um, so, um, this is a step in the right direction, and we appreciate the governor proposal for that. Also, in his proposal, uh, you know, the pension counselors and counselors rate were set to go up next year, and he proposed to redirect some of the funds, about two point three billion dollars, to buy down the rate of about two percent, so that would help with the district budget. So instead of having to budget an increase in expenditures, uh, we budget a minor decrease because of the buy-down. And I'll have the chart for you. He also proposed one-time federal money of four point four billion dollars, uh, for learning loss mitigation. Uh, this money may be restricted, so you will hear that, um, our hope would be that to just offset the funding with the cut, and then we have to make less cut. Uh, but, um, depends on the final budget act and the clarification come out of, uh, Sacramento. Uh, this money may be restricted. We may not be able just to use that and offset against the cut, but rather use it, uh, for learning loss mitigation. And page ten, um, I'm sorry, uh, so page eleven will have that. Page ten will give you, uh, the, uh, Calpers and Counselor rate for next year. If you look at the current year, uh, we are currently paying seventeen point one, uh, into, um, the counselors program. Next year, it was scheduled to go up to eighteen point four, which is about a, a one point three percent increase. But instead of going up, the, with the governor proposal, it will go down to sixteen point four and five. So the saving, the real saving would be from the seventeen point one to the sixteen point one five. Um, so instead of going up, it will go down. Uh, same thing with Calpers. Currently, we are paying nineteen point seven into the system. Uh, next year, it was scheduled to go up by three percent to twenty-two point seven, but instead, it will go down to twenty point seven. So when you compare to the current year, it's still going up by one percent, it's, but it's not going up by three percent like it was scheduled to. So, um, it's good news that, uh, we were able to avoid the, uh, increase in the pension costs and enjoy some decrease, um, in that. So it will reflect in the budget as we prepare the budget. Page eleven, this is the, um, information from the governor on learning loss mitigation, what the federal money can be used for. Um, I will not read it, but basically to, uh, offset any learning loss by the students, whether have, um, um, earlier start of the school year, or extending the instructional school year, provide additional academic services help, or mental health services, counseling services, and, uh, and other related services to students, um, including the breakfast and lunch program. So we are waiting for further clarification from the state, whether we can just offset the, uh, one-time fund with, uh, the cuts, or do we have to spend it, it was, is restricted. So that, um, will, uh, drive the discussions on how much, uh, the size of the cuts that we have to, uh, make. Page, um, it's supposed to be page twelve, uh, with title, uh, Education Budget with the Cash Deferrals. So I want to take a moment to explain to the board what this means. And on top of the ten percent cut, uh, the state also, um, implements something called cash deferrals. And what it means is that the state is telling us, we not gonna cut you, you still get the ten percent cut, but in addition, we will delay payment to you, uh, where, where we, uh, were to pay you. As an example there, um, there were a scheduled payment this June or this month of one point nine billion dollars. That would be the last installment, uh, but the governor say, we will defer that, and you will not get that until July. Uh, so that's a one-month pushout, so, which is not as bad, but next year, if you look there, it's gonna be more severe. Uh, for April, May, and June of twenty twenty one, we were expect to receive five point three billion dollars. This is after the cut already, but the governor pushed it out to July of twenty twenty one and telling school district that we will not get that until July. So, uh, you know, every month, we have bills to pay and payroll, uh, to employee. We can't not just, uh, do this to, to, to our vendors and our employee, and we have to pay them on time. So this will create a cash flow problem for school districts, and we may have to resort to, uh, things like short-term borrowing. We will work with the cloud county to closely monitor our cash in and out, cash flow on a daily basis. And if we need to do, um, a, a short-term borrowing, uh, we will take it to the board sometime in March of twenty twenty one, and basically to borrow the money, uh, in April, and then pay it back immediately in July when the state, um, payment come in to help with cash flow. So, um, you may heard that CSBA and also LACO have a program called TREN. It stands for Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes, and that's the vehicles to, uh, do short-term borrowing for the school districts. Uh, you, we haven't seen that for at least, uh, ten years, since, uh, you know, um, we began to, um, get out of the last recession. We didn't have a need to, to borrow, uh, uh, to pay bills, but we may need to, uh, next April. Moving down to page thirteen, so how much, um, exactly does the cut mean for ABC? With a ten percent cut, it will be about sixteen point eight million dollars in total to the LCFF funding. Uh, fifteen percent will come out of the base, and about one point eight million, oh, not fifteen percent, I apologize. Fifteen million will come out of the base, and about one point eight million dollars will come out of the supplemental grant. Uh, we all, we very used to say supplemental and concentration. In reality, the district no longer receive concentration money, it's just supplemental. Uh, so that's the cut. The special education funding, I shared this, uh, there will be an increase of about two point three million dollars, so that would help with the base, uh, uh, and, or the encroachment, uh, of that program, or contribution, rather. Uh, federal fund, one-time money of three point eight million dollars. Uh, the recommendation here is, if possible, uh, we will use that to, uh, over the two-year period to offset the cut. Uh, however, uh, one, the money may be restricted, and two, uh, they may, uh, we may need to spend the whole thing in the first year. So we will cha- adjust the budget accordingly, depends on, uh, new directions coming out of, uh, the state. We, on top of all the cuts, we are experiencing, uh, a decline of enrollment. One hundred and seventy students at this, uh, this year compared to last year. So it will impact next year budget, uh, in terms of next year enrollment. Uh, honestly, uh, we did some projection last March, uh, but everything's up in the air right now with, uh, COVID-19. We will, uh, monitor our enrollment closely, especially in the kindergarten and TK programs because, uh, you know, we have heard that a lot of parents may not, uh, want to send their little ones, uh, uh, to school this fall just yet, uh, and, 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 and hope to things, uh, clear up. So, uh, TK and K enrollment may be impacted, uh, greatly, uh, this fall. We will monitor it closely, and we will make adjustment accordingly, uh, should we need to. Our, on the duplicated, uh, pupil percentage, this is, um, the percentage of low-income English learners and foster youth, um, at ABC is at fifty-four point four eight percent. Our low-income is standing around fifty percent, that was based on last year. Uh, this year, uh, due to the current e- economic condition, we anticipate that percentage will go up, uh, but the state is using a three-year average to determine this percentage, so it won't help us immediately, uh, but it will help us eventually. So it's not that they're using the current data, but they're using a three-year average on this. Uh, so if you've seen on page fourteen, this chart before, the pyramid, uh, basically, next year, the base amount is one hundred and fifty-seven point nine million, uh, and supplemental is about seventeen million, and nothing on concentration because we are below the fifty-five percent UPP for a total of one hundred and seventy-four point nine million dollars. Page fifteen will give you the recap of the current year LCFF funding and next year, and it, 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 it show clearly the reduction in funding between the supplemental program, uh, about one point eight million, and base about fifteen million, total of sixteen point seven, uh, eight million dollars. So this is the actual, uh, 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 reduction, and at the bottom, it should say May seventeen, twenty twenty. Uh, this, this is the revision, uh, from LACO. This is the latest information after the governor budget proposal. So, uh, this is what we are facing at this point. So on top of the cut, uh, uh, from the state, we have other consideration that we have to, uh, uh, deal with when we prepare or put the budget together every year. Um, LCFF funding reductions and other revenue reductions. We have declining enrollment. We have, uh, step and column costs. We have the health benefit increase happen every year, and we have, uh, compensation cost increase, uh, unique to ABC because of the agreement. because of the agreement that we enter into last year. Some of that cost will be incurred in next year. So we will have to account for that, all of that when we put the budget together. We have not, on page seventeen, refer back to something called the guiding principles for budget reduction. The last time we used this was back in two thousand eight, beginning in that, going through several years of cuts. But this has worked for us in the past. So we are, you know, before we bring forward an item for the board to consider in term of reductions, we use this guiding principles or these guiding principles to guide us through the process. Number one, student success is our central mission. We're here to keep the main thing, the main thing, and the main thing here in A B C is student achievement. So all the reductions we cut will surround, you know, student achievement and try to maintain and keep that. Fiscal sovereignty is fundamental. It will be, it will, this doesn't do anyone any good. Students, parents, families, employees, that we don't have long-term financial stability. And I will talk more about that when we talk about the fund balance and spending it now. But we have to have fiscal sovereignty. We are in the people business, ninety percent of our expenditures relating to salary and benefits. So unfortunately, if we have to make reductions, it will impact salary and benefits. And that's where we have to make adjustments. So that, but we are committed to our employees and our students and our parents. So that's four and five. And of course, we want to ensure that we don't overreact. We only react when we have clarity and information from the state and we will try to communicate that to all stakeholders as soon as we have the information. So before I move on to page eighteen, actually, I'm ready to talk about page eighteen. So this page will give you a recap in dollar amounts of the reductions in revenues and also the increase in costs for A B C, beginning on line number one. The LCFF base funding cut is about fourteen point nine million dollars. On top of LCFF, we are experiencing decrease in revenues, lottery income revenues, interest income revenues, and facility rentals. Lottery, there will be a minor decrease because of the situation, what's going on right now. Interest income, two impacts. One, the rate is going down to almost less than half, less than one percent of the money that we earn. Also, with the cuts and with the cash deferrals, we may not have any cash on hand to earn any income from that. So that would take the biggest chunk of that. And of course, with the situation we in, we have canceled essentially all facility rentals. We don't know when we can resume that. But for now, those three programs will take a collective reductions of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have an increase in encroachment for the child development programs. We have a very strong extended day program. It's a four-fee program that unfortunately, you know, because of school closure beginning on March thirteen, we have to stop the program and refund parents whatever fees that they paid into. While we still have to incur the cost and we don't know what the program may look like next year, but it will be, depends on the requirements from CDC and the state and the county. But we will have, if we were to have that program, it will encroach on the general fund. Number four, we talked about this, declining enrollment. Net of savings from reduction in staffing, it's still a one percent, a one million dollar reductions in revenues. Number five, we have steps and column costs. Number six, this is a positive, good news, believe it or not. Last year, Kaiser rate went up by twelve percent. This year, it only went up by one point two four percent. So instead of, you know, two plus million dollars increase in health benefits, it is a minor three hundred thousand dollar increase of expenditures. Compensation increase, I talked about this because of the agreement that we enter into with all units for three percent increase effective January first, twenty twenty. Some of that cost will come out of next year and that's about one point eight million dollars of compensation increase. Number eight, a little bit of good news here, the two point three million dollar in positive is the increase in term of special education funding. And of course, number nine, I talked about it, counselors and counselors rate decrease. That also give us a saving of, a saving of about one point eight million dollars. So all that adding up to number ten, we have to address about fifteen point five million dollars in total revenue reductions and cost increases combined. If we were to able to use the federal fund to offset the loss of revenues, whether it's one point nine million or three point eight or some other numbers, we would do that. If we will not, then we will have to come up with the one point nine to make up for that. Depends on more information from the state. We are proposing to spend down about two percent of our fund balance, our four point four million dollars. That's what the fund balance is for, for situation or time like this. We have ten percent going into this budget crisis. We require to have a minimum of three. My proposal here is follow the state model and spend down about two percent per year in the next three years. So that will take us down to four percent. And that is just one percent above the minimum. And I don't recommend the board to go below that because when you get down to three, you don't have room to, for, 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 for any error. You expect to be perfect at your budget and that's very dangerous and not prudent. So the plan here is spend down the ten percent reserve, two percent each year, to four percent, follow the state model. So even with the spending down of the fund balance, we still need to come up with eleven point one million dollars if we can't use the federal money. And if we can, we have to come up with nine point two. Now, it could be lower if we have to use all the federal money at once and it could be higher if we can't use all the federal money at all. So that's eighteen. Nineteen are the solutions that we are presenting to the board for consideration, discussion, and direction. But I wanna pause here real quick and share with the board our process of how we come up with this and what we have done. We, the governor, the revision came out on May fourteen. We don't have all the details until May nineteen, that's when we put this together, on May twenty-first. We have our first meeting with principals and our union partners. We had a second meeting with our union partners last week. And at the finance and audit committee meeting on May twenty-seven, we also shared this with them to get their input and feedback. So for each of the meetings we have with the different groups, we ask for feedback and input and we modify, you know, I'll recommend our solution as we got the input. Of course, you know, at the end of the day, we have to bring to the board a set of solutions. I wanna say that these are cuts and none of these cuts are good for our students or staff, but unfortunate and we are not endorsing any of these. But unfortunately, you know, given the situation we in and that everyone, our school district, will have to make cuts to make ends meet, this is what we are sharing with the board, with the solution. I will go through each line item one by one. So the first is to suspend the hiring of five administrators or five administrative positions. We have at the secondary school, five positions that are open this year. You know, normally, this is the year that we would, you know, interview and hire these positions back. But we, the recommendation here is not to backfill those and leave them open. The saving is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In number sixteen, we have four assistant principals at our largest elementary schools. They are at Leo, Nixon, and Cerritos Elementary. And the recommendation here is to keep only one at Nixon and send three back. And the three schools that we are not having A P next year will be Leo, Nemus, and Cerritos and only keep one at Nixon. Why Nixon? Because Nixon is the largest elementary school in the district. So that's number sixteen. Number seventeen, basically a hiring free. We call it strategic hiring. We, any position that comes up, we will not backfill. And we have identified four at this point with a saving of three hundred thousand dollars. Again, except it's for health and safety reasons where we have to backfill them. And all these four positions are at the district office and the saving there would be three hundred thousand dollars. That's number seventeen. Number eighteen, we ask school site and department to share the pain with us and reduce their budget by ten percent since we are taking a ten percent reduction from the state. So that is also a saving of three hundred thousand dollars. Number nineteen, we are reducing all district pay and special education pay for travels, professional development, and contracts by at least ten percent. We are reopening all contracts that our district paid and special education paid and we hope to renegotiate with our contractors and vendors and hope that they can work with us to at least give us a ten percent reduction in fees. This is the goal. We may be able to do more. We may not be able to get any saving, but at least the goal here is to reopen all contracts and renegotiate. So if we were able to do that, then the saving is about three hundred thousand dollars. Number twenty, we are adjusting the LCAP funding, which you will see later, to reflect the true cost of certain programs like the mental health professional programs and the class size reduction programs. Those programs actually should be paid out of LCAP and they are being paid out of LCAP. However, they are encroaching on the base a little bit. We were trying to support especially the mental health programs, but now we are shipping some of the costs to that. It's a very small percentage. The mental health programs, as you can see later, is about three million dollars in total to employ thirty-four mental health professionals throughout the district and a supervisor. So that's twenty, thirty-five F T E and that is a huge program for us. So we're shipping some of the costs there. Twenty-one, our kindergarten through third, this is something we really don't like to do, but unfortunately, we may need to go here. This is what we did also during the last recessions. The contract allows us to staff kindergarten through thirty, up to thirty to one. So right now, we have, we staff them at twenty-six to one. The recommendation here is go up to twenty-eight for next year. And depends on what school may look like. We don't anticipate, you know, the full class will be there physically at the same time, at any given time. So I think this is a recommendation that we wanna take forward to the board and the saving there is about one point four million dollars. Number twenty-two is suspending the substitute teachers at secondary school, except for long-term. As we have teacher that may need to take a sick day or P N, a personal necessity day, we are asking the school to step in, the administrators, and backfill, take care of the class and not calling in a sub. But we are limiting it to two at the high school and one at middle school and Tracy and Whitney. Anything beyond that, we will send them a sub, otherwise they will run out of administrator quickly. So that is the proposal. So to help save with substitute costs, we are proposing this. We may not have certain sports next year, depends on the guideline from the state. So stipends associated with that, since we don't have the program, will be suspended and there will be a saving of fifty thousand dollars because we will not, may not have sport in the fall. So again, we will follow the state and the county guideline on this, number twenty-three. Number twenty-four, the recommendation here is to reduce the infant center program to serve only A B C students. We have about twenty students in that program currently. And this program is very expensive because it's an infant program where with twenty students, we have about eight adults in there, three teachers and five para educators. So because of the staffing requirements and the state reimbursed us this, very little. There's encroachment on the general fund. The intent of the program was to provide infant, you know, childcare, basically, the infants for our teen parents at A B C so that they get focused on school and have not have to worry about that. But for the twenty infants that we currently have, only four of them are infants from our teen parents. The rest came from family and I think potentially up to eight or ten came from families outside of A B C and we currently paying for the encroachment out of the base. So the recommendation here is to reduce the program to, down to one teacher with the capacity of eight, serving eight infants and only for A B C teen parents in our district. Right now, we have four. Next year, one will graduate, so next year will be down to three. So we have the capacity to service up to eight. And with that reduction in the scope of the program, we will have a saving of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Number twenty-five, we have four S I A or student intervention assistant at the comprehensive high school. The recommendation here is to reduce one position at each high school for a total of four. And the saving is about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Number twenty-six, currently, we offer home-to-school transportation, not only for special education students, which is legally required, but to regular education student, which we are not legally required to do. With the new guideline from the C D C, we will not be able to offer this program with the current guideline. What they are requiring us to do is that, you know, only have one student per bench or per seat and we have to skip every row and that, you know, for a bus of sixty seats, we may not be able to only carry twenty students. So to maintain the program, we probably have to double the number of buses and bus drivers we have. So this proposal is that, you know, we are asking parents to help us out and transport their students to schools and we will suspend the home-to-school transportation program with the saving of about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in addition to that, you know, we have some bus drivers that if they are required to wear a mask while driving, that might impair their ability to drive. So we have to work with them for additional training if need to or come up with, or work with the state and the county to come up with a solution for that, for the home, for the special education transportation program. On number twenty-seven, so you have heard a lot of comments about this recommendation. This recommendation is only to suspend the program and I appreciate one of the speaker used that term, suspend and not cut. We are not recommending to cut the program, but to suspend. We are not recommending to cut the program, but to suspend that for, be due to COVID-19, out of the safety for our students. However, we heard the parents loud and clear, and we have a proposal, an alternate proposal in the LCAP to save this program, if that is the wishes of the board. So I will not speak on this anymore, other than that the intent here is to suspend it for safety reason, because of COVID-19. But if the board wish, or, you know, to maintain it, we have a plan ready to share with the board. And when we present the LCAP, I will ask Dr. Mayfield to speak to that. So I will move on to number 28. The recommendation here is to reduce one library clerk or L M T, which is library media technician at the high school, and half a position at the middle school or elementary school with enrollment of less than 450 students. And that will save 10 positions. And of course, the last item would be implement furlough days. The saving is about $700,000 per day. So if we were able to negotiate and implement a four furlough days, the saving here would be about 10, 2.8 million dollars. I want to go on the record and say that 29, we must negotiate with our union partners, and we must, they have to agree to this. We cannot do 29. It's not a given. We cannot do this without negotiations and without their agreeing to this. So all that together, the recommend, the solution come up to 9.2, which is at this time, this is what we need. So I, I want to say that this is in the act-
Sorry to interrupt. In the interest of time, can you, we know that this is available to the public on our website. Is there a way to summarize, and, you know, also, this is an informational item for tonight. Is there a way for you to summarize, since I know we still have several pages to go as opposed to itemizing?
Yes, ma'am. I hear you loud and clear. But I thought, you know, I want to make sure the public have a chance to hear all this. So I will move along. So next page, page 20 would be, what is the budget going to look like next year at total revenues for both the restricted and unrestricted program? Will be about $224 million compared to about $239 million in the current year. So as you can see, that is a big reduction. On page 21, moving down, the total column, if you can look at the net change, the $4.6 million, that will be our deficit spending for the budget year. I want to move out, to point out to number page 24, if you can see that. It's right after, where it says three-year projection, page 24. This is important because if you look at, where it says C net change, we will be negative spending and spending down every year for the next three years. And then, at the end of next three years, we will have only about $1.2 million left above the 3%. So we are spending down our fund balance to get us through this budget crisis. Moving on to the top page 25, there was comment about our reserve. The, the legal requirement is 3%, which is 6.9 million. We, the maximum is 10%, which is about 23. We have just a little bit shy of 10% going into this recession. The average fund balance for Unified School District out there is 17%. So we are going into this recession with about 7% below the average already. So we have, you know, a lesser reserve. And the 17% is actually a recommendation from FICM. And that's, I know one of the FICM referred to that. FICM spent for fiscal crisis and management assistant team. You know, you don't want to see them. And as long as I'm here, you never see them around ABC. But their recommendation is actually 17% along with the GFOA recommendation. And we have 10, and we don't need 17%. You know, money in the reserve will do, will not do our students any good. And we want to, to make sure that we have a prudent reserve, but not excessive. And we have 10% because of the partners that we have with our union groups. And up to 17%, that's the average out there. So on page seven, beginning on page 27 now is the LCAP. And Dr. Mayfield will speak to this, to these items.
Before, before we go to, I'm sorry, Dr. Mayfield, before we go to the LCAP presentation, I do want to have our board members be able to discuss the information that was just shared by Twan.
Thank you, Dr. Su. And to kind of keep order, I was thinking that I would call on board members. And if you have comments, you may voice them. And if you don't, you may pass. And I will just go in the order that we have listed in our board agenda. So I will start with Vice President Mendoza.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation. I know it's lengthy, but I do have some concerns. I am a classroom teacher, and I'm looking at this. And the one thing that scares me the most is may require layoffs. And I'm looking at some of the items, and I'm, I'm very concerned because a lot of these affect the classrooms. And my goal is to have as many cuts far away from the classrooms, from the schools as possible. One of my concerns is item number 16. I don't know if I can have either Twan or another staff. Please explain the four schools. We've got Leo, Nemus, Cerritos, and Nixon. One of those schools is a Title I. Can you please explain to the community why Nemus is a Title I school? What does that mean?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. A school is designated Title I school when that school has at least 40% of their student population qualify for the free and reduced meals program. So basically, low-income families. So a school is, is late, or gets called a Title I school because they get Title I funding from the federal government. And to get that funding, you have to have at least 40% of your student population be low-income.
Thank you. So my, my concern is this, is that our Title I schools are the ones who need a little bit more extra support. And that we're taking away the Tulsa AP from that school and keeping it in another school, it really concerns me. That's one of my concerns. Another concern is the increase in classes from K to 3. You know, CDC guidelines are saying we have to socially distance our students. And that's going to be really impossible if we are increasing class sizes. Teaching kindergarten next year, it's challenging to try to keep kids away from each other when they're natural. You know, it's natural for them to want to, you know, be, be with each other and talk to each other. So that's a really big concern to me, that we're going from, you know, 26 to 28. On paper, it may sound like a little bit, but having those extra students, it, it, it makes a big difference. Another one is the transportation. I know we say, you know, we don't necessarily have to provide transportation, but I'm thinking of those students who may have to go across the district to their school. And what if they don't have a transportation? Then we're going to ask our parents, how, how are we going to ask our parents to get their kids to school? Do they have to walk? Do they have to get on public transportation? It's a really big concern to me because I do know some students who really depend on transportation for us. The next one I have a concern is the music program. Actually, but you said that there is a, you know, we could, we could keep the music program. A lot of it has already been said, but I just want to reiterate. We have great, great, great championship bands. And the reason is because our students start with music in elementary school. And for all the reasons that public comments stated, that, you know, it teaches them not just to learn and read music, but it teaches them so much more. So I'm glad that we're looking into keeping that program because I'm a big supporter of it. And I think the last one was, I think we need to kind of go back and look at some other things that maybe we can, we can cut. I know that the district does pay for a lot of memberships, a lot of associations. And Twan, you, number 19 says, district pay and special education travel, contract PD. Is that for just special ed or are we looking across the district?
So we are looking across the district, obviously. But it will not save us money if it's paid for out of school site. So if sites stop that, or categorical programs pay for that, they will benefit from the savings, not the district. So this is only district pay and special education, travel contract and PD because this will help with the base fund. For example, site's going to take a 10% reduction. So they will have to reduce their travel budget, obviously, and PD to, to, if I were them, to, to adjust down. So that would benefit the school, but not the district. So the, the reason we state it here is this, these are the, the area that would help the base fund. So, but I anticipate that, you know, there will be very limited travel next year of anyone, right? But the saving, I want to make sure I don't capture the saving that don't belong to the district. So that's why we put a district pay and special education pay.
Okay, thank you. So I just, I just want to reiterate that I am not in favor of any layoffs during any of this pandemic uncertain times. And I, I, I know that we're going to go back to our bargaining units and discuss this with them too. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, next we have for Torquay.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This must have been very tough planning, Twan. I could imagine because it's uncertain. We, we have social unrest and just, just uncertainty of the pandemic, how it's going to turn. And thank you so much to Twan, the cabinet, Dr. Su, for the strenuous work to come up with this cut because this is really tough. You know, fun to work with extra, you know, funding we get from the government. But when we have to do 10% cut, it's really hard. And thank you very much that, you know, that, you know, Dr. Su and the cabinet, I mean, you guys are trying so hard to try to keep the, the program, especially the band program. I mean, the extracurricular activity is so important to our district. However, I mean, I think that it really depends on the future with the pandemic, with the vaccine. Even though Lego and DDC, the LA County Health, they do give us direction, and we follow the direction. I know Dr. Su is a very great student, following the direction. Rightfully so, we need to do that. However, they do change their position every often because of the situation. I don't blame them because we don't know what the future holds. So I think that we will plan to keep, you know, what we can keep and cut what we need to, you know, cut. But I think that we do need to be patient and give some room to our, you know, district to do the best, you know, make the best decision. And we might have to change the plan when we get a different direction from Lego come August, right? Or we don't want, we, we will not allow kids to be in school, let's say, right? If that happens, then we, we need to follow that direction, correct, Dr. Su?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, yes. So I think that we do have to make a couple plans. Nothing is definite, and we, we have to be patient and be open. And yet, we still have to plan. So, oh, it's tough. We have to go through this together. And thank you for, for the, for the hard work. Thank you, Dr. Su and Twan. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And that is the, yeah, that's the conclusion of my report today.
Remember, Alphadaka?
Thank you, Madam President. And I apologize to my colleagues and members of the public to get comfortable budgets and looking for efficiencies and looking for cost savings is something that I pride myself on and in the professional world actually have quite a reputation for. Let me begin by saying that I really do wish that our legislature, our legislature, the Senate, our Senator, I believe, is Senator Bob Archuleta, and our Assembly members are Christina Garcia and Speaker Rendon. I wish they had the same candid conversation when it comes to budgets and education that we do. And I will take this opportunity to say that we are the fifth-largest economy in the entire world. California is. And yet, we fund our schools out of the 50 United States of America. We are ranked 42nd in per people funding. After this, who knows? We might just meet the dead bomb. And that's a shame, and that's disgraceful. And I'm tired, frankly, after so many years, or few years, depending on how you look at it, of being on this board, of having to argue the fact that certain things are just a given when it comes to public education. And so I really do hope that our governor keeps his word to help us with ADA funding as well as with, you know, the, the COVID funding. But I'm, I'm frustrated. My constituents, our constituents are frustrated because there's so much uncertainty, and they're looking to us for a certain level of certainty. And so I'm going to say it again. We need full and fair funding. Had we been ranked in the top 10 as far as education goes in California, we would not be having such a difficult conversation. That said, I also want to put out there things that are a nonstarter for me, things that really you will never get me to vote for. And that would be our curriculum, cuts to our curriculum, music or otherwise. Our curriculum is literally ranked regionally, state, and nationwide as some of the best curriculum. Anything less than that, anything less than the best for our students is unacceptable. We should not cut curriculum. Going through and looking at this budget, there are other places where we can cut and we can find sufficient funding to keep especially our music programs in elementary going. And so for me, anything that has to do with cutting curriculum is a nonstarter. Adjusting, adapting, crossing over, working together across departments, sure. But cutting it, sorry, can't do it. Increasing class size, nonstarter. We cannot do it. Go from 26 students to 28 students in a classroom? You've got to be kidding me. I would, I would say anybody listening who says, well, it's only two more students. Okay, as a parent, it's only two more students that you're responsible for five days a week in your classroom that you're being held accountable for personally, professionally. If that student doesn't move on or advance to the next grade, it's your fault. Not their parents, not the communities, not anybody else's, but yours. Because you, as a, as a teacher, were not able to educate that student, those two students. Can't do it. Sorry, there are ways to avoid that. We need to safeguard our curriculum. I'd encourage my fellow board members, as well as board members and local elected officials, city council members. If you're facing furloughs for your part-time or full-time staff or layoffs, please join me in relinquishing your monthly salary, your monthly car allowance, your monthly internet or phone or whatever allowances that you receive from the taxpayer and donate it directly back to organizations in your community that are going to help people survive this pandemic. And after the pandemic, survive unemployment, survive losing their car, losing their house, losing their stellar credit rating. I'm almost done, I promise. For the study session, I think before then, all board members, all seven of us, should submit our recommendations in response to the administration's proposal. Because myself, going through it, I'll, I'll be honest with you, there were maybe three or four things that were supposed, that were proposed for, for being cut that I would actually be okay with. The rest, I will not vote for, and I'm not okay with. Why? Because there are other ways, there are more conservative ways that we could approach this without cutting into curriculum. And there are more progressive ways to look at the assets that we have, not just cash reserves in our surplus, not just what our annual liabilities are, but other assets that we have in the district that we could monetize. The infant center, I understand that we have folks from other parts of, of our, of our area coming in. But instead of cutting them off and reducing class size or reducing the staff at the infant center, why not reach out to those surrounding districts and let them know, if you come to Tracy Infant Center, you have to allocate a part of your LCAP, your Local Control Accountability Fund, a part of your budget to pay for your students to come to Tracy Infant Center. All of a sudden, we go from a cutback to, okay, we have a revenue stream. The Tracy Infant Center is invaluable. And I understand that maybe not everybody is from our region, but that can work to our benefit instead of to our detriment. I would like to direct staff between now and when we do have our study session to look into that, if that is something that we can do, to where we could actually recapture those funds from surrounding districts. from surrounding districts or other entities who send, uh, people to our, our, um, our infant center. It's difficult enough to be a teen parent. I can't imagine what it's like to be rejected from, uh, an organization that was set up specifically to help you gain your education and be a productive member of society. And, uh, with that, I just want to say that, yes, it's difficult, but 10%, we can weather 10%. We have other ways that will not cost any of our employees their livelihood. It might cost them a day or two of pay, but it will not cost them their livelihood. It will not cost them their benefits. And, uh, frankly, I, I, I do hope that we can post all of this and make it very public, so members of the public can see it, respond to it, and when we do have our study session, can say, "Hey, you know what? We agree with this, we disagree with this," and see where it overlaps. But I'll be very honest, um, a majority of what was proposed is just not gonna happen, in my eyes. We can't do it, especially when we have alternatives. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next we have, uh, Board Member Law.
Thank you. I am unmuted. I have some, um, similar concerns. And I, I, I believe we can work through this. We did it before, well, I did it before. I, I think I was the only one who was on the board then. But there's ways to do this and ways to look at things, where we can kind of mitigate some of the things we have in here. It's kind of stark when you look at it and think of the things that we are proposing to cut. I have a couple of things that I want to just ask about. Mr. Apadaka, uh, mentioned, uh, a study session. Is that something we have planned yet or we're going to plan? And we need to get that done before we have to meet on the 16th?
Let, let me, um, answer that question. When I was proposing the special study session, I was really talking about the reopening of schools for the next school year. The budget that you're looking in front of you right now and any of the proposals that is on the, uh, budget sheet today, it does have to be approved by June 16.
So if we, as board members have... Go ahead.
No, go on, Mr. Law.
I, I was gonna say, if, if we, as board members, have concerns or older and things, how, how do we, do we just bring those on the 16th and we go from there? Or is, how do we submit that?
Well, you can certainly communicate with us about it. And we will certainly include those in our next presentation.
I have a couple of specific things that I'd like to ask Twan about. The first one, as a teacher for many years, uh, it seems like that's a really a small amount of people we might need as substitute teachers, particularly at the high schools. There, there's big staffs there, and I, I can't imagine they're only need two subs a day, uh, at a high school. I know when I was doing this in the classroom, I happened to have a, a seventh period that was free, so they used me to fill in, uh, various classes, uh, during that period of time. The next one is, um, has the furlough days question, has that been approached yet by the various unions? Or, I know the last time around, when we did this back in 2008, basically, the union groups proposed this. Is this coming from them or is it coming from us?
So, um, all of this is coming from us. At this point, we have shared with them, and they reminded us that, uh, this item needs to be negotiated. So, um, uh, you know, last time we were able to negotiate, uh, four days dealing with that recession. So you, we have the saving per day there. So if we, uh, need more, uh, we can ask for more. If we need less, we can, uh, do less. But, um, every day, uh, has to be negotiated, and we have shared this with them, uh, but we have not commenced negotiations, uh, until, we hope to do that after this more, more meeting. Depends on, um, you know, the feedback from, from the board.
Thank you, that's all I have. Well, I'll put my stuff in writing and get it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have Board Member Nishi.
Hi, thank you, Madam President. Uh, quick, I'm gonna start with questions and maybe go into comments later. Uh, page 47 of the proposed budget, the capital outlay number six, it goes from 1.9 million to 1.8, and that's a capital outlay. And it's about a 2, 2.7% reduction. What does that actually specifically cover? I mean, is, is it possible to have a, a slightly deeper cut in deferred maintenance, maybe not paint this year and paint, uh, a few years later? Is that something that this particular budget item covers? Or is it, uh, something more basic? I think that some of it is on salary, so that's not gonna be hit. But, um, this capital outline, can you please explain?
Yes, so if you look on page, um, um, deferred maintenance, sorry, you refer to 47, right? So if you look on that page...
47, item number six.
Yeah, yeah. You, you look on that page, um, at the bottom, where it's a, um, item under D, uh, and it's a transfer in, that is our annual contribution to this program. So annually, the district commits to, to transfer about $2 million into deferred maintenance programs. Uh, and they, they have a reserve there, and they can do more or less deferred maintenance projects, uh, you know, depends on the needs. So we, we always look at preventive maintenance, and we'll always assess the needs for, uh, to do, um, different projects, and we, you know, bring it forward for approval, uh, you know, the summer project. So the savings, there will be a savings from the district is to reduce the contribution. So you just, uh, give them less money.
Okay, so...
And then, of course, they would have to adjust the project accordingly.
So is item, uh, underfund transfer D, 2,100, 110,000, is that the actual amount that we spend on deferred maintenance?
Uh, no, depends on the project.
Or is it the 1.8?
Some year we spent more, right? Some year we spent less. If you look at up there, um, going up just real quick, uh, this year we are spending about 2.6 million, where's the total expenditures?
Okay, I see that.
And next year, we propose to about 2.3. That's the actual expenditure on projects. But, uh, the contribution coming in is 2.1, and the expenditures every year they spend depends on the project. Sometime they spent more, sometime they spent less. Uh, they, they able to do that because they have their own, this is a, an old, their own fund and their own account, uh, to, to, to help with that.
So I see on the capital outlay section, it's a negative 2.7. Is there any way we can safely reduce that more so that we could restore some of the other, uh, cuts in the other section? Or is, is that something that's required, that we spend 1.857 on capital outlay? Or this 2.338, 996, could we reduce that by more than 11%? Maybe 17%? I, I don't know specifically, but, you know, and use those funds to restore the, uh, the elementary school band program?
Uh, we have a plan for the, uh, the, the elementary school band program that Dr. Mayfield will share with you, uh, if the board wished to, uh, maintain that without, um, taking into deferred maintenance. But the short answer to your question is, yes, we can reduce the deferred maintenance contribution and, and capture the savings.
And would that be, could that be done safely?
Uh, we, 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 yes, for one year. The, the problem is, uh...
Right, it, it's just the one year thing right now.
It will only help you for one year, right?
I understand. This is the year we have to go through.
Yes, the answer is yes.
So I'm, I'm hoping that we could maybe look at that one and, if possible, again, not to... This fund doesn't include any of the bathrooms, right? And this fund doesn't include the, um, washing stations? It doesn't include that, right?
It does not.
And those are our safety items?
Uh, 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 correct, and that's in the measure BB.
Okay. Second question, so the, the music program, it's a safety issue. Is there a, uh, I can understand that, you know, maybe blowing a horn, that you might be blowing it out, but how are we addressing the safety issue at the, at the upper grade levels?
That, that is the great question, and we, as we have more information from, uh, CDC and the county, we will work with, uh, the principals and the teachers and the band directors in that program. Uh, you know, uh, six feet is always important, so maybe we have to keep it at 12 or 10. Uh, uh, so that's one, um, you know, uh, may, I, I, you know what?
I don't know. I'm, I'm not gonna mic you.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I just wanted to see if, so I know that the reason you wanted to reduce at the elementary school levels because of the safety issue, but I'm wondering if we can address the safety issue at the high school and the middle school, maybe we could try to address it at the, at the elementary school. I know it's not gonna be the same way. I know it. Uh, it's just, maybe it's something I haven't seen yet. I, I understand all of these things are really difficult. I just, um, I do not, nobody wants to lay off anybody. I mean, that's not what we came here for, but, um, with the, this is double the cuts that we saw in the, uh, the last Great Recession. This is double. This is not just a little bit more. So, um, unfortunately, it's, it's not, it's not, uh, you do not have an enviable position, I'm sure, Scotty. Your new nickname. You have to make it work, Scotty, uh, 'cause our, my kids depend upon it. Uh, so the other thing is, I also want to, go ahead.
We, we have to make adjustments, and, and I'm sure the board understands that. But depends on the direct, the directive of the board. If you give us certain directives, for example, uh, save the band program, we will do that. For example, work with union groups and not to have any layoffs. So we'll come back with a plan, a different plan for that. But, but know that, uh, and I've said this, none of the items here that we like or we endorse, or it won't have an impact on students and families, we just have to, uh, take it and present it to the board and, and hear feedback from the board. And if the board have other solution, they will look into, we will do that. Uh, we will work with our union partners. If the number one goal is, uh, to avoid laying off employees, uh, we will bring that back with, with a proposal, uh, on the 16th.
Understood, but we're 85% salary. It, that's, that's basically what it is. It's to, to meet the cuts from the governor, which he did what he could to save us. It's, it's not gonna be an easy task. I mean, like I said, maybe we can cut a little bit more from this, uh, deferred maintenance budget, um, and other things like that that can be pushed off. But again, safety issues are paramount as well. Um, I was gonna ask about LIL in terms of the, the principal, 'cause they have double the, the school population in some other schools. I also don't want it there to be an unsafe situation where we have 800 kids at a school and not enough, because I've been there, and they don't have a, a heck of a lot of admin folk there. It's just a, just a few. So I'm hoping that we can make sure that we keep a safe situation when we make these cuts to the, the TOSA and things like that. The second thing, or actually, the last one is just a comment and the four furlough days, which I guess that was something that was done many years ago, where the, the various employee groups basically sacrificed to save their fellow worker, which was really admirable. And I think our staff is amazing in, in doing that, in, in saying, "Hey, it's not just about me, but it's about the guy who stands next to me." And I know that in the public sector, a lot of, I think the city of LA is looking at a lot more than four, four days, and, and just actually just two more days would restore a lot of this where we wouldn't have a lot of layoffs and maybe even, uh, encourage, uh, some retirements as well. So that's the only comment I have on that, and I'll reserve my questions about the LCAP when we get to the LCAP section. Um, oh, one more thing about the, um, the special ed. So there's $2.3 million more to special ed, but the special ed is upside down by 19 million. So that means our special ed kids aren't actually just gonna get more. It's just gonna incur, or it's not, it's not gonna encroach so much on the, the general ed. But I'm wondering, how are we addressing special ed? Can we have like a separate session on that? Because I need to, to advocate for us, right? And, uh...
Some root.
So I need to be able to know how we are addressing it in this telecommunications environment that we have. So thank you. That, that's the last.
Mr. Nishi, one of the things that we were thinking about doing was a special study session on special education.
I would really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
I would really appreciate that, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Board Member Say?
Can you hear me, uh, President?
Yes.
Oh, first of all, thank you, President. Um, Dr. Sue, I want to thank you for starting the unjust case on Mr. George Ford's death and capture generational fear and injustice on camera. And good morning to everyone at home who are watching us tonight. Stay home and stay safe. Uh, we, I mean, now we have 6 million case of COVID-19 across the world and lost about 370,000 people to the virus. And across the board, we still don't have the vaccine yet, so that, right now, the vaccine's on the second phase. So what's gonna happen in the future? Our lecture time or, or hybrid or online thing, so uncertain. But the most important is, I want to remind my colleague that we all aware our total revenue is reduced, the costs is increased. And we are the negative 15 millions, and we, we may have one-time money from the federal fund with, uh, 10% today. But come with the strength attached. We can't keep our fund balance 10%. And this will be done 2% every year. And we're spending our remaining, um, our remaining day. What's, what about if there's another wave? What's gonna happen to our employee? There'll be no money to pay at all. We can't have, uh, afford this. We might even, I think we really need to have a solid five-year plan towards the future. Might even put in, uh, consolidated school that will be in the future to, to think about that. Now, I'm not gonna talk this now, but tonight, now, one of the things, I read the preliminary budget report and see some, um, cutback and holdback, especially the elementary school band. That's my favorite one, you know? And I know people tell me about, very well, the music ignites all area of a child development, skills for school readiness, including intellectual, social mo- emotion, all the things. It helps the body and the mind work together, okay? But the issues here tonight, I need to ask Twan, the problems we have, and you know, I feel, just like Mr. Ford said, the last word, "I can't breathe." It's a tough decision for tonight. But there's something we need to answer to the parents, and we also need the staff to respond on that. I have a question about the band, elementary band. The reason I question about, there are two-fold we're talking about. What kind of education we can provide them, through the online or through the face-to-face? If through the face-to-face, you can't wear mask, 'cause when, all the equipment, you have to blow it and suck in, those kind of things, also in and out of the air, droplets, will make the COVID-19 worse on those children, those innocent children. They, they might catch easily from that way. If you're talking about keeping them more than six feet apart, how the teacher can teach them? We have no space for that. And that's one thing we have to think about. What was the reason the staff put it up? Yeah. It's online education, are we ready for online education from our music school? I'd like to hear from, um, uh, from our, 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 uh, education, uh, academic, um, Dr. Mayfield. I want to hear from you. Can they do that? Can we provide the services? We can provide it. We're not cancel the, uh, elementary school band. We're just holding back. The minute government clear, the minute they don't have to wear mask, everything program will be back. Am I right, uh, Mr. Twan?
Uh, that is correct. The recommendation here is to suspend it and not re- eliminate it. So I want to make sure the public hear the word suspending until the COVID-19 is over. Uh, but, um, I will ask Dr. Mayfield to answer the questions on the academic side of it. But the recommendation here is never to eliminate the, the program, but to suspend it.
Is Dr. Mayfield there?
Yes, I am here. Thank you so much for the question. As we begin to explore different options on how we want to reopen school in the fall, we'll have to take a look at all of our programs and services and ask that same type of question. How do we continue to provide, um, this type of learning experience for students and assure that we are meeting all the required guidelines for safety? And so we, we'll have to answer that question for band. Uh, we'll have to answer that same question for sports programs as we hear that some professional sports programs are planning to come back. Uh, we'll have to answer that question for physical education. Um, and so that question is definitely one, um, Board Member Say, that before we proceed, we will need to have an answer for it. We don't have clear, um, guidance tonight. We don't have clear, um, guidance tonight from, um, Laco or from the state, but we will have to see if there is a, if we can provide a viable program. We may not be able to provide a viable program if students are expected to wear masks and if the teachers are expected to wear masks. We may not be able to provide a viable program if we don't have enough space to have students socially distance themselves. And so we don't have the answer tonight, uh, we will need to have the answer to that question far to, as returning or reopening school in the fall.
And you will get back to us when, Dr. Mayfield?
Well, as Dr. Sue indicated earlier, we are, um, proposing that there be a board study session in July, and that that board study session is when we will address, uh, plans for reopening the school in the fall and at that point provide clarity around specific programs, specifically, um, ban being one of the programs.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry about that.
Um, that's why, um, Mr. Lee had indicated earlier, while we can put a placeholder in, um, for a ban, um, so that we can decide at a later time if we feel that we can provide a safe and viable program in the fall for students. Because again, you know, we can provide the program, but if parents are concerned about their children's safeties, then they'll choose not to be in the program. Um, and so that's why it's gonna be important for us to first be able to assure our public and our families that we can, um, meet the guidance that we've been directed to provide for students in that type of classroom setting. I'm anticipating sometime in July, when we're talking about the models for schools that to reopen, that we'll have a more specific answer at that time.
You will also provide, uh, online versus the hybrid, uh, education, the, uh, the survey results, uh, on the July, I mean, or June the seventeenth, fifteenth, our next board meeting?
Um, yes, if you would like to, I can provide the survey results to the board, um, prior to the June six. And, um, if the board is requesting that to be an item of discussion at that time, we can, or we can put it in the context of the July board meeting, if there is a July board meeting scheduled.
Couple of clarification with Twain, uh, you probably gonna answer to me, is regarding the, uh, union contract negotiation. You know, um, I know, I may have probably forgot, I'm also there thirteen years, thirteen years in, in the board, so I know a lot of, uh, things happened before, and I can guarantee my colleague, our staff really know how to work with us. And number one, we always trying to prevent the layoff, you know, which is, we all understand that. Number two, and I look at the budget here, we, we have here and the, the negative we have. There's a couple of question I want staff to think about it and work with the, uh, our brothers and the union people think, how can we help? I, 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 I am sorry to say that. I, I know we just give a raise to our staff. They're so, they've been working so hard. Three percent, I, I know people say, why you give a raise? But I wanna tell the people probably to understand, three percent really nothing compared to other districts. And we wanna retain our good teacher and, you know, I have shared with many teacher there. I understand they, really, they didn't get that much raise. But I'm asking, if we can, consider one of the so-called salary, uh, rollback. I know, I think I spoke to you, Twain, you say we can save about three percent. Uh, how much are three percent about that? Four million, you say?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you also have a page nine, that so-called, um, it's like three point eight, government, government gives a four, four point four billion, and we're getting approximately thirty, three point eight million, am I right? The, under a learning loss mitigation.
That is correct.
That is a positive, the three million, um, three point eight million, right?
If the government or the state allow us to use this money freely, then yes, the three point eight million is, um, you know, um, come without strings attached. However, like I share with you, the money may be restricted, um, depends on the definition of lot, uh, learning loss mitigation and, uh, how do we carry each of those items out, uh, or using it to offset the cost? We are waiting for further clarification from the state, uh, on this item.
Okay. So if we can work, I, I mean, I lead that example. I would like to even starting on board, it's myself, cutting my stipend five percent back. And I think when a salary rollback will apply all straight to board, including our administrator staff, that we can talk about, 'cause that will be saving about four million, plus, uh, if we get this learning loss mitigation about, and that three point eight million, so we having about seven point eight million. But that also, I mean, that has to be, everybody has a wrong to do. This will prevent the layoff. And I know board member Nishin talk about increase more, um, furlough day. You have to remember, four days group, 'cause usually we do the end of the semester, uh, end of the classroom, doesn't really affect the student that much. But when you increase furlough day, you also what? You drop the, through the education hours, and you're pushing staff to minimize their education, the time, teaching time. And I don't like that. And I say, when you increase furlough, even though I know other district increase up to ten days or fifteen days, I study that, but I try to minimize that, 'cause two-fold, decrease the student, uh, learning education time, also interrupting our teacher, teaching time. So I wanna prevent the, uh, the layoff. I want, uh, also want to maintain our education hours, um, I wanna, just like we just say, uh, focus on student achievement and keep the main thing to the main thing. That's what I want to say. The last part, I also wanna throw something to staff to think about it. We're talking about quality help each other, so when we have rollback, maybe they help. And we can also pay them back later on, right? We, I think we did it one time. Am I right, Twain?
Um, the rollback?
Rollback, what is the rollback hand, um, benefit to the staff for the future? If we're planning ahead, ahead of time?
So in two thousand and eight, we were able to, uh, negotiate with the union, and they agreed to, uh, four furlough days. Uh, since, since I've been here, uh, we have not, uh, negotiate for a rollback, uh, with the unions. Uh, but, uh, you know, uh, if, uh, we can approach that, uh, you know, uh, however, we have not, we didn't do that in two thousand and eight, and, uh, uh, it's not on the recommendation list here, uh, but, um.
I'd like to act as a recommendation to work on it. We try, we have to try everything we can, and we don't wanna lay off the people, but what, what else we can do, right? I wanted to, leaving my sample, um, take down my salaries, nothing. Stipend, actually, it's almost nothing. Two other thing I want the staff to think about. One of the things that I had learned, free salary movement on the pay scale, free staff, you know, the staff and column, can we do that? That's one of the thing we can save some money from there, for long-term, for short, I mean, for a little while until we catch the economic goes back. And I really wanna encourage like, uh, incentive toward the retirement. That we can think about it. I believe the way I calculate, we can save about seven point eight million from that if, if the, uh, the learning loss mitigation will help. But again, this is just my thought and with the twelve, thirteen years in the school board. And I, I, I beg my, uh, colleague to, to look into that. We can't just tell staff, I don't wanna cut this, I don't wanna cut that. Staff have to come with the money, but we have to work with our staff, and we have to work with our entire staff. And I, I commend the staff to work with us and just have another special study and trying to find the, uh, the way, I know Twain is very good. I know you have to save some money, and I spoke to the three, um, committee, on the finance committee member, and they all praise about you, and they all realize, they shake their head. Even the people who have the kids who wanna go to band, they told me, do the best you can. But there's a lot of thing we can get parents involved too. That'll be my, uh, end of, uh, question there. Thank you, Twain. Thank you, President.
Thank you. I also wanna make a statement. Um, it was stated that our guiding principle for budget reduction is keeping the main thing, the main thing, student achievement. Well, I would like to ask that we revisit, and that we make the main thing be student achievement and student wellness. Um, I think cutting school budgets by ten percent is going to add much pressure to our school administrators in effectively running their schools. I think suspending substitute teachers from the secondary schools is going to require pulling staff members, like administrators, away from running a school to teach a class. Um, I highly recommend we find an alternative. Um, SIAs are an important part of our schools. Um, they're important in the security and the safety of our students. Um, reducing SIAs will be putting our students' safety in peril. I don't know that there is a high school principal that will tell you that they can do away with one less SIA to maintain, again, the same level of fa- safety and security on their campuses. I know that we're getting an LCAP update, and I wonder if we can use some of that funding, um, or to supplement, um, or avert the cuts that we have heard, um, at many of our schools that already have a high number of unduplicated students, or to at least mitigate some of those, um, proposed cuts. We value every member of our district, and we value our programs. Um, we especially value the arts. We are still recovering from the cuts that were made to the arts program from the last time district took such a financial hit. We have learned that cutting the arts is never a good idea. I don't know that we've ever had a more passionate request from our community than the request to save our band programs. And I think we pride ourselves in, in listening to our community and acting accordingly. Um, graduation was second, but, you know, two hundred and fifty calls, that's highly impressive. So I would recommend we maintain the program. Um, the last thing that I have is a question, Twain, and that is, you know, our school closures have, you know, created a lot of situations. Have we looked at ways that, you know, because students are on our campus, um, that we have lower cost or something? Um, if we go into some of the plans that we are considering, or there are areas that we're not gonna be spending money that we can perhaps use to supplement, um, some of these cuts?
Thank you for the question. Of course, we will always be looking at areas that we will be saving. What I'm not sharing with the board is that, uh, if we have schools in the fall, uh, depends on the direction from, uh, the state and CDC, they're potentially gonna be much, much more added to the cost, uh, to, to the operation, not savings. For example, um, uh, PPE, right? Uh, the, the, uh, the portion, personal protective equipment. We have to, may have to buy mask, we have to buy thermal, um, the, the reader, the, the, the scan. Uh, we may have to install plexiglass throughout the building or in the classrooms and other safety measure. We may have to, uh, hire or provide overtime for custodial staff to do extra deep cleaning and, and other equipment relating to that. So on the one side, there, there could be areas that we might save some money, and we'll take advantage of that. But, uh, I, my feeling at this point is that the additional cost of reopening the school, uh, will be outweighed the savings as you have heard over the news, uh, from all superintendents, uh, concerning that, um, it is, uh, impossible to reopen school with a ten percent funding increase, uh, let alone a ten percent cut. And not impossible, but it'll be challenging because of the issues we have, uh, all the health and safety issues we have to deal with, especially if our main thing now is, uh, student achievement and student wellness. So, um, we, uh, we will make sure that our students will be safe, uh, but I, uh, I'm, but I, uh, that's why part of the reserve is more, if I have to spend more, uh, to keep our students safe, we will do that. Uh, but, uh, thank you for the question. We will also always look into areas that we can save, uh, uh, coming into the budget year.
Okay, thank you. Um, I know that there was somebody that wanted to make a, another comment. If we wanna make it brief in the interest of time?
I would, Madam President.
Go ahead.
Apadaca, thank you. Um, really quick, I just wanna bring to light the fact that when we cut programs in public education, it, it, it takes quite a while to bring them back. And so while I understand that right now we're saying, oh, well, we're gonna cut this, but eventually, we'll, we'll fund it. When we get money, we'll fund it. And I'll be very straightforward with members of the public, no, we won't. And if we do, it'll be partially funded. It won't be where it was supposed to be. I'm speaking from experience. I'm speaking from not just our, uh, our MTSS, our, our, our public, uh, or I'm sorry, our PBIS, which is our intervention programs for our students, our wellness coordinators at all, at all of our schools. It took years to get to the point where we could have one at every single school. Um, even more so, music. I'll tell you right now, if we start causing, start cutting music and the arts, um, it will be, I mean, it'll be a challenge. And as an example, I will, I will, my first year on the board as vice president, Mr. Leo Perez came up, and he started talking about the fact that we're not funding the arts. We're not funding the marching band at Cerritos High School. The following year, um, at the time Clerk Mendoza, currently Vice President Mendoza, pushed and, and made it a priority to make sure that we increased funding to the arts. And we did, to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we've increased it exponentially since then. But it wasn't above and beyond what should have been. It was to make up and recuperate for the deficiency and the lack of funding for the arts. That said, I don't think we should cut the arts. We can find ten percent somewhere. Also, uh, with, uh, with regards to the comments made by, uh, board members say, as somebody who's an administrator for a retirement plan and a 401K, um, I can tell you that, yes, we do have step and columns, yes, we do have obligations to CalSTRS and CalPERS. They are legal, non-discriminatory obligations. We can't just cut and choose as we see fit without actually getting that approval, not just as a plan sponsor, but also from the plan itself. When we're dealing with labor and, and the bargaining table, we can't just say, well, you know what? We're not gonna give you your step and column this year, or next year, or the year after. What I'm saying, and what I'm, what I will propose at our, what I hope will be a, a very public study session for the budget, the final budget, will be that we can still keep our step and column. We can still keep our written obligation and our contract to our employees without having, um, to have any severe cuts to what they're doing. We can find it somewhere else. And with that, I, I yield back, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, um, so at this point, we.
I have one more, uh, question. I have one more question. Olga?
Okay, can you make it very brief?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I'll make it very brief.
Go ahead.
Uh, Twain, I was just, um, wondering, you know, for some of the programs, because of the pandemic, uh, there's no childcare, there's nothing happening, right? So.
Correct.
Um, and we, we are not certain where, when we are going to go back. And I know it's really tough, and I'm sure you guys had hours of meeting, all-day meeting, where to, you know, make up the ten percent, and you probably looked everywhere, and, yeah. And we, we don't know all the detail, and however, um, I mean, I think that we do need to have, you know, backup plan because in case, uh, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen. If the schools don't open up as Laco have directed, then there, it doesn't make sense to spend money on, uh, you know, programs that, you know, will not exist. And we also need to, to find ways to, to come up with a ten percent. It's, it's tough. It's not easy, but I trust that you guys will do your best to, to keep the programs as much as possible. But we have to have a solution. We can't just say, we, we can't cut this, we can't cut that. Can we ask our teachers to say, hey, can you guys take more than fifteen furlough days? We can't do that either, you know? I mean, they have already sacrificed to, to do four days, and that still need to be negotiated. I think it's, it's a, it's a tough decision. It is a tough process, and I think that, as I said, we just need to be patient and keep in mind that, uh, the future is still uncertain, you know? So, that's all. President, I wanna remind you, we are right now at ten oh nine. Our policies are up to ten thirty, so you might want to extend in time.
Thank you. Thank you, board member. Um, say, so yes, can I have a motion, please, to extend our board meeting, board meeting for, um, no longer than thirty minutes?
You think thirty minutes is getting up? I know our policy is thirty minutes, but I don't know.
I think in respect to people's time, four hours is reasonable.
Uh, you know, we have a number of other major items that still, uh, pending. I know that Dr. Mayfield is still going over the LCAP reductions as well. So can we limit it to no more than an hour from now?
It has to be, everyone has to agree, 'cause usually the policy extended half hour, right? Am I right, Dr. Sue?
Well, we can extend it for as long as we want, but it can, for, for my recommendation, I would say to no more than an hour. It's now ten, ten.
So I made a motion, please, eleven, ten?
Well, yeah, somebody would have to make a motion, and it would have to be second, and then it would have to be approved. So, um, board member Nishin?
Yes, so I, see, here's the problem. If we extend, we can only extend once. So if we make a mistake and it's not thirty minutes, then we have a lot of unfinished business. I think we need to be safe, extend it an hour, and if it, we don't go the full hour, actually, we shouldn't go the full hour, we're trying not to go the full hour, but at least give us the chance to finish up the business, 'cause there's a lot of other issues that are here. I'm, I'm not gonna contribute any.
Up, up to an hour? Up to an hour?
Yeah, I made a motion to move our, uh, tonight's meeting up to ten, eleven, eleven PM.
So moved.
So that would be a half an hour, Sophia. We would need to move it to eleven thirty.
One hour, one hour.
One hour, one hour, eleven, eleven, eleven-
Second.
That would be eleven thirty.
That's only thirty minutes, Sofia.
Oh, eleven thirty, that's more than one hour though.
That, we're talking about an-
It's up to you, I, I mean, I, I, I can make to eleven thirty. That's, there'll be one hour and, uh, how many minutes?
Twenty-eight minutes.
Twenty minutes. Thank you for your, uh, 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 so you want to do eleven thirty, I mean, eleven thirty PM? Do you want to make a second?
Second.
Somebody make a motion, please?
I made a motion already, President.
Apadaka, second.
Eleven thirty.
Let's call for the vote. I call the question.
We, we are voting on a motion to extend meeting to eleven thirty. Okay, Danielle, roll call, please.
Mr. Apadaka?
God help us, yes.
Mr. La?
I'm thinking about it, okay, yes.
Mrs. Mendoza? Mrs. Mendoza? Mr. Nishi?
Yes, thank God we're not Cerritos City Council.
Oh.
A good motivation for us to stay here, Sofia. Oh my God.
Oh, I love the way you- Did you call me?
Mrs. Se?
No, that was Rio, yes.
God bless, ABCUSD.
Mrs. You?
We can't lose you.
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
I'll text her, actually, she knew that herself, let me text her.
Uh, the motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to make an appeal to everyone to please practice brevity. Brevity is you don't precise and exact use of words in writing and in speech. So, um, Tuan, I think we're still going to continue with your presentation?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Olga Rio, this is Dr. Mayfield, and I'll be speaking about the LCAP. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes, we can, Dr. Mayfield.
Great. So I need to put the LCAP supplemental funds in a little bit of a context because we're in an unusual time period. Um, as the board may recall, we were actually ending our three-year cycle. So our LCAP three-year plan was scheduled to end this school year, um, prior to school dismissal. And so what the state has decided that since we are in this COVID-19 state, we're with a LCAP single-year plan. And so tonight's, um, budget recommendation centers around one school year only. Um, it is a twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. And so in December, I will have to come back to the board along with this budget and a little bit more information about the LCAP plan, as well as engage our stakeholders in the process. Starting next year in January, I will begin bringing to the board and the community the next three-year cycle. And that three-year cycle will take place from the school year twenty twenty, twenty-one to twenty-two and ending in the school year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And so the recommendation is that we look at this as just an extension of our already three-year plan since it is only a single year. And I want to emphasize that, that these, it's more of an extension of what we've already been doing, um, but extending it for one more year. And at the end of that one year, we will begin the next three-year plan cycle, which will involve the board and our community stakeholders. And so for the most part this evening, um, as you heard Ms. Nguyen share about the percentage cut, that cut also applies to these funding source as well. And so most of these items have been, um, cut by twenty percent, um, or more. And then we have increased some items and added a new item. And so I will go through these fairly quickly out of respect for time and be more than happy to answer any questions in the end. Um, the, on page twenty-seven of the presentation that you have, um, we have three items there where the funding has been reduced and the services will be modified. That's item number one, which is our teacher induction program. Item number three, that includes working directly with teachers on curriculum, instruction and assessment, as well as a lot of our programs that our parents enjoy and our students enjoy, like the spelling bee, reading Olympics, STEM club, math bee. Um, and then item six is our TIPS initiative that involves our one-to-one computers. Uh, that also has a lot of professional development and technical support that's built into that item as well. And so those three items, the budgets have been modified. Um, the other items on this page will remain the same. There's a, I'm sorry, a modification to item number five, which is our illuminate, is our database system for our assessments. If you go to slide twenty-eight, um, number seven, um, has, budget has been modified. Um, that's for our LCAP parent meetings. We typically meet in person with our families. We provide dinner, um, childcare, homework, support. Most likely due to COVID-19, these meetings will probably start the year off in a virtual platform, video conferencing of some sort with some in-person meetings. And so we think there will be some savings related to the cost of food. Um, number twenty-eight, that item has also been modified. Um, this is the district support for school sites and particularly the coordinators at the school sites who are responsible for, um, working with our English learners and our ELDP programs. Uh, we feel comfortable making the shift here because we do have other federal funds that will use to offset this modification in cost. Uh, number nine is also being modified. Um, this item used to also include a AP summer boot camp for students. Um, our data has not really showed us that, um, that approach has been effective for our students. And so we are looking at this one-year off as an opportunity to reevaluate how we support our students in AP classes. And so the modification would be to continue with the advanced math course, um, access, which will allow students during the summer to transition to higher-level math programs. Uh, number ten, the cost for our TK through three class size reduction has increased. Um, if you recall earlier in Ms. Nguyen's presentation, um, he indicated that the cost of this was approaching on the base fund and that this is definitely an item that can be totally funded out of supplemental concentration. So we're recommending moving the funds into the appropriate funding source. Uh, number eleven is our summer school program. It will remain intact. Uh, we're anticipating an even larger, more robust summer school program. And therefore, for number twelve, which is our credit recovery online courses, we're able to modify the cost there because we anticipate that we'll have, um, try to, um, have as many students as possible, cred, um, recover their credits, um, in the summer school program. Moving on to the next page, twenty-nine. Um, item thirteen is our Avid program. Um, this budget has been modified. We had made plans to expand Avid at three new schools in the fall. Um, due to this, um, modification, we will not move forward with adding three new schools. Uh, we may also have to reduce some of the services that are provided in this area. So we'll be looking closely at this particular item. But we still value Avid. We have Avid at all of our middle and high schools and at four elementary schools, which are Ferguson, Willow, Palms and Melbourne. And so again, the modification here mainly pertains to bringing on three new schools. Item number fourteen, there was an increase in funding on this item. This is our mental health professionals that we are going to continue to maintain. Um, one at every elementary school and middle school and Tracy High School and two at each high school. Um, so what's being added to here is our district-level social worker who oversees all of the mental health professionals as well as the mental professional interns. Um, that person also coordinates the resource teams, um, that are supporting our students and, um, particularly students who are identified as being homeless, foster youth or military. And so you heard Ms. Nguyen share earlier about, again, moving the funds, um, from the base and placing them appropriately. So here in the supplemental, um, funds, which has resulted in an increase to this item. We are modifying items number fifteen, um, as well as sixteen. Um, again, we are still being able to retain the services that are being provided directly to students, but on a, um, a smaller scale. So cutting back maybe some of the hourly, extra hourly pay for staff to operate some of those programs, but still making sure that the program is viable for the students that they serve. Uh, number seventeen, um, previously we had two SROs, uh, one housed at Artesia High School and one at Garra High School. Um, our proposal today is that we modify this and only have one at Artesia High School and not the one at Garra High School. Um, again, this is a one-year proposal, it's a one-year modification. Um, we are exploring other ways to, um, to possibly look at this item regarding working with, um, our sheriff departments about sharing the schools, um, as well as modifying the cost. There's been a significant increase in the cost for this, which also makes it a very difficult to continue funding. Number eighteen remains the same. Um, number nineteen is also modified. Our schools have done an amazing job implementing, uh, PBIS. We are still going to continue being a PBIS, um, district and have the PBIS strongly implemented in all of our schools. Uh, but we are able to make some modifications here because we've had school teams who've now gone through training for three to five years. And so this allows us now to not have to provide as much district-level coaching support because each school has its own PBIS well-trained team that's been through years and years of professional development. And so we feel comfortable in making this shift. Um, and again, we'll have our mental health professionals at the schools who can also support, um, the principals and the PBIS teams in ensuring that those, um, components stay in place. There's no change to number twenty. On page thirty, on page thirty, um, there is a modification to our professional learning that is provided to our classified staff. And again, because we think that professional learning is just going to be provided in a different platform, most likely virtually, um, we can save a lot of costs that's associated with renting, um, facilities and providing meals by using a virtual platform. Number twenty-two is our K-12 dual Spanish immersion, immersion program. There's no change in cost to that item, it will remain the same. Uh, number twenty-three is our beloved visual performing arts program. Um, it's loud and clear to us that this is something that we should look to retain. Um, we will, um, need to make additional shifts beyond what you're hearing tonight in order to move more money into this item to retain our elementary program. Um, and so when we bring this back to the board in June sixteen, you'll see a shift in funds to increase this item here. Um, again, I do want to still have the board be aware that, you know, at, we're, we're going to be expected to follow the guidelines that, uh, will come to us from public health agencies as well as from, um, the California Department of Education and Los Angeles County Office of Education. And so as we look at the ban program in the future, we'll have to ask ourselves some important questions on how do we ensure that we can provide this program and still keep our students safe? But, um, for now, we will be making some shifts to assure that we can have the funding for this program to continue. Number twenty-five, number twenty-four is our CTE program. There was no change in funding to that item. Uh, number twenty-five goes back to what Ms. Nguyen was sharing earlier. And I want to speak a little bit more about our team program. Um, as Ms. Nguyen indicated, we're currently serving about twenty students, um, around nineteen to twenty students. Of those students, only three of them are students of high school-age students. The other sixteen children, so we're talking about the babies of the individuals, the other sixteen, um, babies are not students, they are adults. So I just want to make sure that the board really is clear that of the twenty students that are there, and the reason why, actually nineteen, because we have one that graduated out. So it's really nineteen. Of the nineteen, only three of the infants belong to, um, student teen mothers. The other sixteen students are infants of adults. And so we are asking that we restore this program back to its original intent, which was to support teen parents, um, and particularly teens who are attending school in ABC. Um, number twenty-six, again, is a modified, a modification, and that is a cut to our school's budget. Um, and, um, asking them again to, like all other programs, we're all in this together. We're all sharing, um, these cuts to make sure that we can retain as many programs as possible. So we are asking schools to take a fifteen percent cut in their supplemental funds um, so that we can meet the needs of all the programs that are listed here. So that ends the items that we are proposing, um, that the board will consider again at the June sixteenth meeting. We'll be asking the board to vote on this. Uh, again, again, I want to emphasize that this is just a one-year plan. And so I will have to bring back this budget and the one-year plan, um, in December. But a lot of these services start taking place in July. So like the whole summer school program begins in the summer. Um, a lot of these programs begin in the summer. So we do need, um, to have this budget approved prior to December so that we don't have a loss of service to our students and our families. And that ends my presentation on this item.
Thank you, I'll go ahead and do roll call again in case there are comments, uh, Vice President Mendoza?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just, no, no comment, I just, I just, it would have been nice to have, I know you said there were some changes. Um, it would have been nice to see like the difference, what was, what was the cost before and what, what was the cost now? That's it, thank you.
I can provide that for you in Thursday notes.
Board Member you?
Yes, um, I, I mean, I, I know that, you know, things are uncertain and depending on the pandemic, I think that we might have to act fast and make, even have, come up with, uh, adjusted plans. Even though we do vote and decide now in June, uh, depending on the situation, we might have to, you know, have a meeting in July and August to, to update and make adjustment in the decisions and say, um, things get better and, you know, by, uh, November, that everyone can go back to school because everyone's vaccinated, then things that we might have to really ramp up and, you know, have the full swing and get all the programs in and all the, you know? I mean, I mean, I, I, I wonder if there's a way that we can, because of this pandemic, have some options that, yeah, we're going to decide on this now, but in the future, when this happens, that we will have to, you know, increase the budget or something. You know, and, and plan to have, um, you know, meeting. I know we're supposed to have a meeting like every other, every, once a month, but depending on the need, we may not just a study session, but have more meetings to decide and discuss. Because a lot of things, uh, Dr. Mayfield, you know, brought out were very important, but things may change in the future. So that's just, um, my question. I don't know how Dr. Su and Ma, Dr. Mayfield can address my concerns and questions, but, yeah.
So this item will come back to the board again in December because, um, I have to bring, uh, prior to December, I'm sorry, prior to December, by December the fifteenth, the board will need to take action on the LCAP again, um, for the one year. Um, again, emphasizing the one-year plan. And as you indicated, as we get more information from the governor in August, um, definitely, you know, we can bring this back again to the board in August for reconsideration based on if there is any adjustments up or down. on if there is any adjustments up or down based on the governor's information in August. And so, it can come back to the board and we can make changes and we can resubmit it to LECO, but we do need to make a decision in June in order for us to begin operationalizing it and reopening the school in the fall. Otherwise, we will be, you know, paralyzed, not even able to take action to reopen the school. Sure, sure. And also, I would just like to request that, you know, we have the extra fund, I forget the name, that's coming in for the schools and the students in the Title I who may need that extra help when the school opens up fully, that they're going to be a few months behind, they're going to be extra tutoring and support. And I hope that we can have the budget, the local, you know, LCFF funding for those students who need that extra help because they missed out during this, you know, pandemic. Yes, we, we, yes, we would agree with you on that. And the funds that we just talked about in this are primarily directed to our students who would fit in that description. We do know that when we're working on our three-year plan, that will definitely give us an opportunity, we'll have a better understanding of the learning gap that we're facing. We'll also have a better understanding of what school is going to be looking like the following year, and then we'll have a three-year budget to work on to really develop and give some thought to and involve our stakeholders in a very meaningful way around how we can address those, the learning gaps that may have occurred during this period of time. And so, we will be addressing it in the fall as well, but we do know that with the three-year LCAP and a year out from this, we'll have a better understanding of what school will look like in the future and how we can make those gaps. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Board member law?
No comment until I see the revised comparison of the numbers.
Board member Nishi?
Yes. So, essentially, item twenty-three regarding the VAPA budget, it was previously, I think, something like two or three hundred thousand. Right now, it's one fifty. That's going to be adjusted up, but it's going to be adjusted up from something within this, the LCAP category, the seventeen million. So, for this one fifty to go up, something else has to go down, right?
Yes, you're correct. Previously, VAPA was about four hundred thousand dollars. And so, our recommendation was to shift it down to a hundred thousand. But if the board is wanting us to retain instead of suspending it, because again, our proposal was a one-year suspension, but if the board is wanting us to retain it, then we will have to go back to this list that I just reviewed and find three hundred thousand more dollars.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's the only question I had.
Board member Apodaca?
Thank you, Madam President. Really quick, Dr. Mayfield, I just want to bring this up and thank you for clarifying with regards to Tracy Infant Center. As far as anybody who might not be a resident of our district, I do want to say, though, that for me personally, if we have someone who's an adult, which is eighteen or older, I can't imagine that we have anybody who's older than eighteen, nineteen, or twenty from outside of our district coming into Tracy Infant Center. If there's a mother, whether it's a single mom, whether it's, you know, someone who's in a, you know, a domestic relationship, who's married, however you classify it, if we have someone who has an infant that is in our school district that is seeking the help and the support which is offered by Tracy Infant Center, and I would encourage members of the public to go to Tracy Infant Center and see really what they do. Frankly, we can find a way to make sure that mothers who are seeking help or who are in need of a little extra help with their infants receive it. And just looking at the line items as far as what Tracy Infant Center would cost us in funding, again, I'll go back to my original statement. For me, it's a non-starter and we can find a way whether or not those adults eighteen and over are, whether or not we can build their home districts if they're from out-of-district or frankly, if we can find a way internally to absorb that cost. And I'll name a great one, Baby to Baby, which has provided tens of thousands of dollars, if not more, in assistance, not just to Tracy Infant Center, but to FEDI Community Center and would more than likely, even during these difficult times, supply more assistance to, to families, to mothers and their infants. So, thank you for the clarification. I just want to make sure that the public is aware that there are other avenues to make sure that not just parents within our district, but we should also be aware and frankly, proud of the fact that we have been able to support parents from without our district who are pursuing an education and are still coming to us as a resource. If we can foot it, we still should. Thank you, Madam President.
Board member Say?
President, thank you, President. I want to ask you two questions real quick with Dr. Mayfield. Number six, I agree with Board Member Mendoza who mentioned, we really need to see the comparison, how much we cut. Because I have a concern, number six, I don't know how much you cut. It's right now two million on number six. And this is very needed, is access to mobile device to support instructions in the state standards. If we cut on the more, that will be what? Be less support instruction to the students, right? That would really affect them study at home.
No, if we, the reduction here would not affect students' access to mobile devices or to hotspots. And so, that's, those, we will ensure that students have the resources and support that they need. Also embedded in this is professional learning, and so, there's a place where we can make some modifications. Again, the way we've done this in the past is going to look different. And so, professional learning can be also done virtually now. And so, some of the costs that's associated where you have to do in-person professional learning is, you don't have to have that same level of cost when you're providing it virtually. And so, we're able to still provide support for teachers and have a savings, but the reduction here or the modification here would not affect students having access to devices or hotspots for students who qualify for those hotspots.
Okay. And the last one is actually also related to Mendoza, Board Member Mendoza, as you mentioned. Tuan mentioned about the twenty-one, you know, increase of class size K to three, twenty-six to twenty-eight. I know there was, doesn't need a negotiated contract because there was a rumor we can, can grow from there. On your number ten, which is page twenty-eight, it says this money actually is to an LCAP supplemental that Board Member mentioned, reduce TK to three class size. There's kind of conflict there. This one to, this money to support reduced size, but then on the other hand, we're trying to increase.
Well, there is an increased cost in the supplemental funds because we're shifting the cost from the base to the LCAP supplemental.
Okay.
And so, by moving the cost here, that's why it's costing more to fund that program. So, one of the pieces of information we have to consider, and again, today, we don't have the answers, but if we, let's just give an example. So, for an example, if we were to have one of the hybrid models, even with twenty-eight students, not all twenty-eight students would be in the classroom at the same time. So, in a hybrid model, at the most, about sixteen students would be physically in the classroom. Sixteen students is still lower than their current class sizes. And so, this is a way to look at it. Again, as you've heard Mr. Nguyen said, none of these are popular choices for any of us. We're just having to make some difficult decisions and try to make decisions that we feel will give us the same level of service to our students with minimal impact to the classroom. And so, the increase that's reflected here is as a result of shifting those funds from the base to the supplemental, which is an appropriate place where we can fund this item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mayfield.
Okay, that leaves me to go next. Dr. Mayfield, can you please review the amount of money that the district receives in LCAP and the specific students that this money is directed to support?
So, we receive, we're anticipating for the next school year about seventeen million dollars. These funds are generated based on the unduplicated number of students who fall into the following areas. Students who are English learners, students who qualify for free reduced lunch, which is low socio-economically status students, students who are identified as homeless or foster youth. And so, based on the unduplicated number of students in those categories, that's how we receive this particular amount of funds.
Thank you. And so, that money is, again, you know, Tuan mentioned, we're at fifty-four percent. And so, that money is specifically meant for those fifty-four percent of students to receive added support. You know, this year, we took much pride in equity, and that is exactly what equity Some of our schools do receive added funds, and you know, as always, I reminded parents this last year, parents are always welcome to select our Title I schools as schools of choice. I want, I think this review always raises a lot of questions for me, and Su you mentioned that we needed additional meetings. I think that we, having a special study session to review just the LCAP would probably go a long way in us understanding better how these funds are allocated because for, especially, I'd like to see this happen before December because I really want to, again, look more in-depthly at how we're spending our money and more importantly, the quality of services that are being provided to these students in these categories, more specifically, our language learners. I mean, last year, I raised this exact question. I always look at this item line, I think it's, I don't know the number, but it's the one that allocates nine hundred dollars for one additional counselor at AHS. So, I don't know if you can speak to that? But how is it that one? Yeah, go ahead.
So, we, I'm trying to find that item number that you're referring to.
Eighteen.
Okay, thank you so much. So, that's on page twenty-nine, item number eighteen. You're absolutely correct. That cost is not just for one counselor. It was for, we added an additional counselor at Artesia High School. And so, this is from the, this, this plan that you're looking at is part of a three-year plan that's been ongoing starting back three years ago. And so, three years ago, when we first added that item, we brought back counselors to different schools as well as an additional counselor. Our, our schools are giving counselors based on the allocation of number of students versus counselors. And so, in addition to bringing back counselors to all of our schools, Artesia received an additional counselor. And so, because this is part of a three-year plan, the language here doesn't change much and the cost associated with that still is the same. And so, it's not that it's costing us anything less because it's part of a three-year plan and we're still retaining those individuals. And so, this has been an ongoing cost over the last three years to maintain the additional counselors plus the additional one that went to Artesia High School. So, that's, that's why, that's why, that's why you, that's why you see it here every year because we're still funding it every year.
But yet, we get money, like, last year, we got twenty-one million in our LCAP. This year, we got seventeen million, and we can expect money to, I mean, since the LCAP has been implemented. So, again, I think that we just, I personally would really like to have a session where, again, we are able to dissect a lot of this because these are our most, you know, we're talking about learning gaps, these are kids that are going to probably experience and are already experiencing the hardest time with this pandemic. And so, moving forward, I think it's going to be even more important for us to really look at what we're doing and to make sure that it's of the highest quality and that the seventeen million are, are really going to help these students succeed. Because when they succeed, we all succeed. That's it.
Dr. Rio, can plan on a special study session in the new school year before December, for sure?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that ends this presentation. Thank you so much. Tuan and Valencia, Dr. Mayfield?
Thank you. Thank you.
Let me go back to our, okay, so at this time, we will move on to action items. Item one point three A, payment procedures for board candidate's statement on board limitation. May I have a motion to approve option one, requiring board members, Board of Educational Election Candidates, to pay the cost for statements in advance and establish the statement limit of two hundred words?
So, move.
Second.
Any public comments on this item?
Madam President, there is none.
Roll call, please.
Hello, President, I have one question.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead, Sophia.
Oh, you know what? Since we're four people running this election, four people will be running this election, can we vote it or should be okay? Is that really directed to the four people who are running the, the school board under twenty, twenty November?
Apodaca, comment?
Go ahead, Chris. You might know that better.
I'm waiting for acknowledgement from the chair. Yeah. Madam President, if I may, I would say, board members say, what makes you, what drives you to assume that all four of us are running again? I would just throw that out there for you and the general public because after what we've been dealing with, who knows? So, I, I think it's appropriate for us to vote. That's it, Madam President. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't know who, who is or who's not to find, you know, people will have to submit papers and that won't happen until late summer. Okay, so call, roll call, please?
Mr. Apodaca?
I.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rio?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Reading of revised administrative regulation forty-three eleven point three A, staffing new and existing management positions. May I have a motion to approve revised administrative regulation forty-three eleven point three A, staffing new and existing management positions?
So, move. Sophia, second, Mendoza.
Dr. Zilo?
Yes, good evening. This board policy revision we are bringing in order to update the screening committee members when it comes to principal positions for our trustee areas. And so, the changes that you'll see begin on page ninety-three. And the change here would be that for our, each of our trustee areas, the trustee for that area would select the community members that would be on the panel for when a principal in, for a school in that trustee area is to be selected. And for our trustees who are in Cerritos, we would have a rotation between them for the schools that are in those trustee areas. And then, we would continue, as we do now, for cabinet-level positions to have our rotation of trustees to put community members forward for those cabinet member positions.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, there is none.
Thank you. I'll move on to board comments. Vice President Mendoza?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. There's some language that I'd like to add to, to this new policy or revise, sorry. I'd like to add that when a community member, when their, their first language is not English, that we would like to provide them with a translator if, if they, if they would request one or if they need one. And also, Dr. Zilo just mentioned about the list of board members who are going to be selected. Can, can we, can board members get a copy of that? Can we have that, you know, put somewhere so that we can look at it so we can anticipate who's coming next in this election?
Absolutely. So, this is Dr. Zilo. And yes, we can add, translation would be available for any community members who are selected that would need that. And then, we will also put the list together so that you're able to view those.
Thank you so much.
Orca, you?
There is none.
Board Member Apadaka?
None at all.
Board Member Lo?
Oh.
Board Member Nishi?
I have a few questions. Is this how we've been doing it previously?
So, how it's been done previously is, um, the community members, as they were needed, we had a running list of who recommended community members. And when we came to a new principal opening, or a cabinet opening, we would then ask the next board member on the list to provide the names.
So, the modification now is that the Hawaiian Gardens trustee nominates the community member for the Hawaiian Gardens Schools? Is that correct?
Yes, the, the concept would be that the principals for the, for the schools in each trustee area would be nominated by the trustees who represent that area.
But for Cerritos, it would be slightly different, because one of our trustees only has one school.
Well, and for, there are three different trustees, so we were looking to have it be shared, because yes, one of the trustees would only have one school.
Okay, that's the only questions I have. I, I kind of don't like the tribalism that this kind of creates. And it means that I only need to know about Cerritos Schools, because that's the only place that I'm appointing to. And I don't need to know Lakewood Schools, because I'm not going to be appointing for that area. So, I, I don't like how this is going to create a tribalism in, in our seven trustee areas. How do you feel?
Apadaka, comment?
Yes.
Well, was that a question for Dr. Zito?
No, I'm just asking the other board members for a discussion regarding this, because I'm troubled that, that Lakewood will only apply and help Lakewood, and Cerritos is only going to be doing for Cerritos. And so, I understand that we're part of the community, and we know who's part of the community, but we should know all of our other trustee areas, too. Where, the president needs to have experience with Artesia, Cerritos, Hawaiian Gardens, Lakewood, all of these areas. And so, if, but if she's, if he or she is only appointing for one particular area, one less reason to go visit another school in another area.
And I think you're right, Madam President. We do have that, that added responsibility, and we all will have our turn, right? I think to speak on behalf of this, um, I, you know, as a community member, got to sit on a committee to elect our local principal. And I sent my kid to this school. And so, I have a vested interest, as a Lakewood representative, to have a say and to nominate people to sit on that committee that I trust know the needs of our community. Now, can we, as board members, know the interests and the needs of all of our districts? Maybe, but I can tell you that I'm not going to know the needs of the community on a school that I don't live in, or that I, that I don't, um, you know, spend a lot of time representing. Do we try to represent all schools? Absolutely. But, you know, I know, I, I've lived here for twenty years. I know what goes on around me. So I think this is an effort to give our community a voice. You know, I don't know if we can make it an option to yield that responsibility of putting a member on a committee to other members, if they feel strongly. But I think that that was the direction that this was going in, that, you know, people whose kids are going to go to that school should have an important voice and a seat at the table. Anybody else want to comment?
Uh, yes, I, I put my name in.
Go ahead, Chris.
Apadaka, thank you, Madam President. You know, I'd be very careful with using the term tribalism. What I would tell you is that, you know, I was vice president my first year on the board, I was president the second year on the board, and I had to appoint people to schools that were not in Hawaiian Gardens. Whitney High School is not in the city of Hawaiian Gardens. And so, I did seek out, uh, parents and students within Hawaiian Gardens who would be willing to give feedback. They were not available. The next best thing is to consult with parents who have students who are active at Whitney High School. And that's exactly what I did. And who do we have? John Brickley, um, who was a result of that. So, I would say that, you know, asking, asking me, Chris Apadaka, hey, by the way, um, heaven forbid we lose Myra Lozano, Principal Lozano, Hawaiian Elementary. When you appoint somebody, I can tell you right now that appointing somebody who is not familiar with the demographic in Hawaiian Gardens, appointing someone who really does not know the sense, the cultural sensitivities, which we have to keep in mind, just as I would, and just as I did, when dealing with, or not dealing with, but being asked to appoint somebody to the, to people, to the committee for Whitney High School. Let's face it, we all here know this for a fact. Whitney High School parents, whether they're from Cerritos, Lakewood, Artesia, Hawaiian Gardens, or elsewhere, they are a very particular group of folks. I had to find someone who could adequately represent the best interests, not only of the parents who are currently having, who have students at Whitney, but also of students from all over the district who aspire to have, you know, students at Whitney. And so, no, I, I think that if you were to come to me and say, hey, Chris, um, Ernie, if Ernie were to ask President Nishi to come to me and say, hey, Chris, I'm supposed to find two community members to sit for appointing a principal at Hawaiian Elementary. I would give him a list of names of people to speak to. Not so much, hey, Ernie, hey, these are my friends, hey, I want this person to get the job. No, not at all. And anyone can tell you that that's, that's not how our board works. But rather, this is who you need to speak to, understand some of the traumas, some of the concerns, some of the sensitivities that we have in that specific part, not even of our trustee area, but of our city, right? Of our region that serves that school. And I can tell you that, um, I, I would value that very much, and also, our constituents would value that very much. I, I can't imagine that any of the folks that voted for any of us on the board would say, you know what, no, do not consult anybody from our trustee area about who should represent our voice on the board. Because the final say really does come down to our district staff, the, the, the subject matter experts who know how to hire educators, who know how to hire administrators. And let's face it, if it's a bad hire, I think we've all learned, um, without going into detail, we've all learned that as a board, we will respond if there is an educator or administrator who is not fitting the bill. I have full faith in our board, and I have full faith in our district staff to, um, to vet those folks. But I do agree that we should have the local recommendation of two of however many, um, recommenders when it comes to hiring principal or hire within our district. Thank you.
So, one, one last thing before, you know, I end the discussion on this for myself. I, I like that Hawaiian Gardens can cheer on the successes of Whitney, or Cerritos, or Artesia, or GARR. That any one of our kids in Hawaiian Gardens can go to any one of the other schools, and any city, um, person in Cerritos can go to any school in Lakewood, and Hawaiian Gardens, and Artesia. And it burdens our school board members to know more about the entire district. I think that we're, that's, you know, we've had these riots in this country, because we have people separating out, there's divergence, there's a, there's this difference between the rich and the poor, a big difference. And they don't see justice, because we don't see each other's point of view. The whole point of Dr. Mayfield's Equity Training is that we do see what it is to be in a different set of shoes. And that's hard work. And so, I know that we can ask somebody else, hey, what do you think? And get that answer pretty easy, without really needing to know the details of that particular community and area. And that person will probably have subject matter expertise, because they live in that area, of course, right? But, you know, we got elected, it's one district. We are judged as one full district. I want to be able to cheer on all of our schools. Whitney can't rise if, if the other schools don't rise also. I have to, I want to be cheering on, um, Artesia and, and all the other schools, because I, I feel like I'm invested in that. And that's why I invest the time, too, because I need to know the communities that I, I, I'm part of. I just think it takes us down a different road. I, I'm sure that the current group here is good to understand that we need to be part of a, a large community, and not have the divisions and separations. But I'm just afraid that this takes us along a, farther along the route where we have walls being built between our communities, that this is Hawaiian Gardens, and don't you dare step in my area, because that's my school, my turf. Nemus is my school, don't you dare cut away anybody from there. And I just don't want us to do that, because if we all work together, all of our communities do better.
Can I, President, can I say something?
Everybody works together, we all do better. The ship floats together. So that's it, that's all I want to say.
President, can I say something? This Sophia.
Okay, well.
Real quick.
I have the time.
Okay, real quick, um.
Sophia, I think when you say real quick, it sounds.
No, no, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying. I only have one question. I remember when we appoint those kind of, uh, at that time, we usually make rotations, my turn, your turn, there's no go by the area. And the other thing, when we choose the teacher or the, the principal, that principal may not stay that place only. They might flow, we might flow them to other areas, such as GARR High School right now. He was assigned to the, uh, Hawaiian Garden area, but now he moved into GARR area. So, the, the people we hire may not stay the same place forever. So we need to have an open mind, too. But, you know, that's my opinion, bye.
Wow, Sophia, well said.
Uh, response, Madam President.
Was that Chris?
I want to say that there, there is not one person on this board, since I've been elected to this board in two thousand and fifteen, that has ever, um, not been welcomed in Hawaiian Gardens, one. And two, we, I mean, there are still people asking when Olympia Chen and Mayor Lo are going to start visiting our, our schools for Walk to School Day, or when they're going to be at our city council meetings. Yes, because people, people didn't understand that Olympia Chen, Mayor Lo, and I, more recently, uh, that Ernie Nishi didn't represent Hawaiian Gardens. In, in our neck of the woods, as far as anybody knows when they speak to me, we all represent the entire district. And Ernie, more than anybody, I feel, and I'll give Ernie credit for this, and my apologies to any other board member, Ernie, when he was president, went out of his way to visit all of our, our trustee areas. And so, I don't think that we've, as trustees, fomented any type of hostility or animosity to where, you're from Cerritos, you cannot come to Hawaiian Gardens. You're from Lakewood, you can come to, to Artesia. I would say that we're all in this together. And frankly, right now, our, our city, our city borders do not matter. Why? Because we're just trying to get our cities, uh, to work together.
Order meeting?
And so, we have, I have the floor right now.
Under the order, uh, we have right now, eleven oh six, we only have, uh, twenty-four minutes left.
I'm almost done.
Thank you. And I want to tell you that, uh, President, I mean, Board Member Apadaka, I also go to Hawaiian Gardens a lot, okay? This is Sophia.
Oh, no, so, 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 hold on. I'm almost, so I'm almost done. What I would say is, there isn't one person sitting on this board. And by the way, Sophia, all set, all six of us, uh, you know, supported you.
Yeah, oh, I know, so good, yeah.
So what I would say is that this board, this board, and I would encourage the public, members of the public, to look at this board, this, this school district as truly one unified governing body. Because if you look at our cities individually, I mean, you, you cannot judge our schools or our trustees on the areas that we represent, because frankly, our cities are so divided when it comes to things that we, as a school district, just hold as fundamentals and a given. So I would encourage my colleagues to just keep doing what we're doing, and to continue to respect each other when it comes to our respective neighborhoods, communities, and areas. But I'm, I'm totally okay with having members of my community offer feedback when it comes to hiring a principal or administrator, um, within, you know, a neighborhood here that is much different from, say, a neighborhood that, um, is elsewhere in the district. And that's the politest that I can put it. Thank you, Madam President, I yield back.
Thank you, and I just want to remind the public that, you know, we went to, um, by area voting because of issues, because representation was an issue. And so, I think that we have come a long way, and we are, we do our best to be out there and visit all the schools, and get to know the district as a whole. But we can't ignore the fact that we do have concerns that are specific to certain areas. So with that, I will call for the question. Danielle, roll call, please?
Mr. Apadaka?
Aye.
Mr. Lo? Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi? Mr. Nishi? Dr. Rio?
Yes.
No, no.
Mr. Nishi, was that you?
That was me, that was a no.
Thank you. Mrs. Say? Mrs. Say?
I just want to, uh, work together as a team. Um, if this is a board member, uh, Apadaka, feel very comfortable with that. But I do want to, I will vote for yes, but I do want to remind all of us, the people whoever we hire, not just only say one area, eventually will flow to the other area. We need to work together.
Oh.
Thank you, I vote for yes.
Mrs. Yu?
I'm going to, I'm going to abstain.
The motion passes five one zero.
No, uh.
Thank you, I, and I. I inadvertently skipped an action item, so I'm going to return to it. Um, item one point four dash A, reading of the revised board policy sixty-one forty-six, graduation requirement. May I have a motion to approve revised board policy graduation requirement?
Sophie, so move.
Good evening, this is Dr. Mayfield. We're asking the board to consider.
Just a minute, Dr. Mayfield, we haven't had a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, Dr. Mayfield.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, we're asking the board to approve, uh, one change to the current ABC graduation policy. And this change is in reference to any type of emergency. We're under COVID- nineteen right now, and as a result, many districts have looked to modify, um, their graduation policies to include language that would, um, accept the state's criteria as the standard for graduation. And we're asking that ABC, um, proceeds in the same direction, where we will continue with our current ABC graduation policy requirement, but in the case of a national or state emergency, we would be allowed to only hold our students to the state's graduation requirement. And so, if you were to look at the page eighty-six, you would see underlined on page, started at the bottom of page eighty-six and the top of page eighty-seven, in the exemption and waiver section of the board policy, you'll see the statement that I'm asking the board to approve that we add to our board policy, and I'll read it for the public. The California Education Code, Ed. Code five one two two five point three, establishes a minimum set of a. students may experience a loss of instructional time and the opportunity for credit recovery coursework. In emergencies that warrant such a significant change in how students receive instruction and engage in learning for extended periods of time, the superintendent or designee is authorized to exempt students from graduation requirements that exceed the statewide course requirements. In the case of a state and/or national emergency, students who meet the state's graduation requirements shall meet the criteria for graduation. And so, we're asking the board to adopt this change to our current board policy, acknowledging that in the case of a state or national emergency, our students can graduate based on the state's graduation requirement. The difference between the ABC graduation requirement and a state requirement is the difference of about 100 credits. The ABC requires 10 additional credits for English, 10 additional credits for math, five credits for health, and 75 elective credits, which exceed the state requirements. Are there any questions?
Okay, any public comments?
There is none.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Abadaka?
Aye.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Doctor Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Emergency resolution 19-103, award of emergency contract hand washing and bottle filling station project. May I have a motion to adopt emergency resolution 19-103, award of emergency contract for the provision and installation of hand washing, automatic hand sanitizer dispensers, and bottle filling station at all states.
So, Mendoza?
Mr. Wen?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Sophia, yes.
Okay, Mr. Wen?
Thank you, Doctor Rios. So, due to the current health pandemic, and in preparation for school to reopen this fall, we are installing about 350 hand-free hand washing station sinks at our schools, 40 portable sink hand washing station also, and 222 automatic hand sanitizer dispensers. So, normally, we will go through a formal bidding process to procure and install these items. However, due to the current situation we in, we want to be able to install it by, in the summer. So, we are asking the board to approve an emergency resolution, so that we can procure these using an informal purchasing process and not the formal bidding process.
Okay, thank you. Any public comments?
There is none, Madam President.
Discussion?
Yes, I have one quick question. What is the difference between the informal and formal?
Thank you. The formal bidding process is, we would have to issue an RFP, advertise in the paper, and go through a process of evaluating it and awarding the contract. The informal process, we would, we just need to get three quotes from contractors and select the lowest one, without going through the bidding process and the advertising process. It saves about two months of time.
Yes. Aside from the high cost, this is an emergency situation. I'm ready.
Hey, roll call, please.
Mr. Abadaka?
Aye.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Doctor Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Wow, we have come to the end. Board members report. Well done, everyone. Okay, Board President, Vice President Mendoza?
Because of time, I'm going to go ahead and pass.
Mrs. Yu? Board Member Yu?
Well, I'm making sure to, just with the pandemic and social unrest, I mean, I lived through L.A. riot, and we will remember this time for a very long time. And first, I want to thank the peaceful protest, which took place on Monday, June 1st, in front of Cerritos Civic Center. And a real shame to those rioters who are distorting the true message and movement of Black Lives Matter and turning it into looting and stealing and destroying the minority store owners. I mean, police brutality has to stop. I mean, these are rare moments, I am thankful to serve as a school board member of ABC, one of the most diverse communities, to fight discrimination, equality, and justice for all students. It starts with educating our children at our home and in classrooms. And, I mean, all the hard work that our staff have gone through during this pandemic, I have to applaud and thank and appreciate all the hard work and the labor and hours of meeting, you know, trying to sustain our children, and just keep up the good work. And we need to educate our children to treat each other with respect regardless of color of the skin. And even just in our board members, too, we are so diverse, and we have to make a lot of effort to understand each other's culture and needs. It just starts where we are at. So, just want to, you know, yeah, that would conclude my report. Thank you.
Board Member Abadaka?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be short, but sweet. I want to thank members of the public who have held out this long, and I also want to emphasize to our employees, to our parents, to our students, that we don't take any decisions that we make here lightly. And I, in particular, don't take reducing someone's livelihood lightly. And more than anything, I want to say to the, those who rely on Tracy Infant Center or any of the other services that we provide in ABC Unified, in all of our cities that we serve as a district, to the most vulnerable, or typically the quietest within our district, that you are not forgotten, that you have advocates on this board, and that we will make sure that your interests and the interests of all of our stakeholders are considered moving forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Board Member Lo?
I would like to pass. Thank you.
Board Member Nishi?
Real quick, Teacher Leadership Seminar was great. We should have been there. It was a lot of new information. You know, the day of remembrance that I have, Dr. Mayfield's Equity Institute, and all of these things are relevant. We need to double down on this. I mean, the incident at Whitney is just more evidence that these civil unrest is coming from something deeper. And unfortunately, it's probably coming from, hello? Okay. I think that we need to continue to study these issues in a concentrated way, so that way, those protests don't just, we don't see another protest in another five years, repeating the same thing over and over and over and over again. We're in education. We can teach our kids, through our hearts, a better way. So, I will be very happy if we have some sort of special initiative to address these issues. And finally, a council member had passed away in our local community, Mr. Edwards, and, you know, he served Gar High School, he served our city, and he served our community. And we may not have always agreed on everything, but one thing we know is that he served, he served well. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you. Good night.
Board Member Say?
Oh, thank you. Once again, Dr. Su, thank you for starting the unjust case of Mr. George Floyd, the death, capture generational fair, and justice on camera. I also do echo Board Member Nishi talk about the city council member, Jim Edward. It is a great loss to our city, and he's one serving our city 50 years, and the community, he truly is really devoted his life to the Cerritos city. And then, also want to say, what I learned, this George Floyd issues, that we all need to learn to respect each other, despite the color, the race, other things. We all come from different countries, we're here to work together. And tonight, there's another thing that we do need to learn to work each others and respect others. Overall, we are doing really good, though, compared to City Cerritos. You know, we always come to the agreement to compromise, to be flexible. I attend two meeting, Zoom meeting, and then one Zoom meeting, one is to talk about Proposition 13, the budget allocation. And second one, also went to serve the deal at the Gar High School. It was a great experience, I met a lot of parents, and I had a chance to talk to a few parents, but I did maintain six feet apart. That will be my end report. Thank you, President. Have a good day.
Thank you. Well, I don't promise mine to be short. I definitely want to make a statement in response to the civil unrest happening in our country, my condolences to the family of George Floyd. I want to say that I stand in solidarity with people speaking out against social injustices. I recognize the systemic racism and implicit biases that is all too prevalent in our society, and want to work to make things better and create real opportunities for change. We need to do better. Intolerance and offensive rhetoric has no place in our schools. We need to examine why such events happen, and more importantly, take action to do a better job to promote appreciation of our diversity. We need to do a better job at celebrating the variety of students who represent different cultural backgrounds and nationalities, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, ability level, languages, religious beliefs, as well as others. Embracing these differences makes us a better district. And besides, people who are considered different are here, and we are here to stay, we're not going anywhere. Challenges always create opportunities. We are working on a resolution, the voices of our solidarity against social injustices, and in response to the pain that our country is experiencing, we hope to adopt at the next meeting. There is a call and a need for bold and courageous action. In answering this call, I want to ask for the support of our board, and recommending an item be placed on the next agenda to create a task force representing the various stakeholders in our district, with the sole purpose of promoting social justice in all of our schools and our district as a whole. The time for change and the time for real action is now. Lastly, I want to congratulate our teachers for stepping up and meeting this challenge of distance learning. We are, these are unprecedented times, and we are still dealing with much uncertainty, but I trust our district leadership to hear the concerns of our parents and to prepare a plan that takes into account the voices that we heard from our community, especially tonight. And in closing of my comments, I want to extend the biggest congratulations to all of our graduates and their families. I think I can say that on behalf of the board, we wish our class of 2020 much success, be it in college, a career program, military, or the workforce. Congratulations. I invite our board members to participate in the variety of drive-through graduations that are going to be happening at the district. Announcement, next regular board meeting will be set for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, at 7:00 P.M. Committee meeting, Finance and Audit Board Advisory Meeting, Thursday, June 25th, 2020, 6:00 P.M. Are there any second public comment section, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, thank goodness, there's none.
Okay, adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn in the memory of Jim Edward, City of Cerritos Council Member and former ABC employee. Mr. Edward served as a council member for the City of Cerritos from 2008 to 2020. Also, Mr. Edward was a teacher for ABC Unified School District from 1974 until his retirement in 2005. May I have a motion?
The move.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Abadaka?
Aye.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Nishi?
Yes.
Doctor Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
I vote yes, too. You forgot me, but I vote yes.
Okay.
(laughing).
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.